This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. All right, notice is hereby given, the Lago Vista City Council is holding a regular meeting on Thursday, August 5th, 2021 at 5:35 PM via go-to meeting as prescribed by VTC, a government code section 551.041 to consider the following agenda items. Sandra, please note, we have every council member in attendance and we start with executive session. Do we have anything that we need to go to executive session over? Nope, nobody from council?
No, no, no.
Council Prince?
I do, I do have one quick question, which shouldn't take more than a minute or two.
All right, let me finish then.
Thank you.
All right, one convening to close executive session pursuant to section 551.071 Advice of Council, 551.072 Real Property, 551.074 Personnel, Section 551.087 Economic Development, Texas Government Code and Section 1.05 Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct Regarding a Consultation with Legal Counsel and Possible Action Concerning Any Regular Meeting Agenda Item Requiring Confidential Attorney Client Advice Necessitated by the Deliberation or Discussion of Said Item, and this is as needed. Before I note the time, I will let the audience know that at 5:30 council goes into executive session. Once we come out, we recess until 6:30 because that is when the actual public portion of the meeting starts. So for those of y'all who've already logged on, if you want to take a break, do something, the official open meeting will not start until 6:30. And we convene into executive session at 5:37 PM. And I will see council on the other side.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, I see three. Four. I see Paul. Dick.
I'm here.
Oh, okay.
He was just incognito.
Yeah, I saw, I saw David's name. I just don't see Dick or Paul.
No. I don't get any interference when I turn my camera off. I get interference when I leave my camera on. It's okay, when you speak, then you start breaking up on me.
All right.
On my end or on your end?
I think it's probably on my end, but I'm not sure.
That's it.
Because sometimes when I have my camera on, the whole screen disappears and I have to go out and come back in. So I know, I think it's probably on my end.
Got it. Got to bump up that internet service.
I know. Usually it happens when I need to get off anyway, so. Give me a minute.
A minute of rest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we'll give him just a little more time.
Let's see, we got Get it. Shalane, I see her.
Maybe they are, maybe they decided to just recess.
Yeah, I think it's just Dick and Paul, right?
Yep. All right, well, we're gonna, we're gonna proceed.
Okay.
Go back up here to page one. All right, so we reconvene into executive session from executive session into open session. And we will recess as we reconvene at 6:03 and we will recess until 6:30. We will be back for the open session at 6:30. Thank you. No, I don't want to do that. I just wanted.
This conference will now be recorded.
I see Kevin, Dick, Paul. David, are you there? There's David. Arch and Shalane. So. See Shalane's name. So she's on. And there's Arch. All right, we will proceed. We reconvene from recess into open session at 6:30 PM to act as deemed appropriate in city council's discretion regarding a, any necessary action regarding any regular meeting agenda item. Aaron, if you would please, would you give the audience a brief overview of the executive session?
Sure, Mayor. I provided legal advice regarding the project related to the peninsula and the calculation methodology for determining the protest level that would require a three force vote by city council.
All right, thank you. Is there any action to be taken?
No action.
No action. All right, we shall move on then. We will go to the pledge of allegiance. We will say the pledge to the US and the Texas flag. If you would, please join me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, one nation under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. You may be seated. All right. We go into the citizen comments portion. In accordance with
Where I started?
Oh, wait.
Just like it.
All right, there we go. Okay, so citizen comments. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. We have our rules of procedure governing citizen comments listed on the packet agenda worksheet. I am not going to go through the entire list for everyone. But during this portion of the meeting, this is where the audience can speak on non-agenda items. So I know there's a lot in the audience that are here for certain specific agenda items. Is there anybody in the audience who has non-agenda items who they would, they would like to address council with? All right, I am not seeing anyone. We will move on. All right. Items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415, the city council may report on any of the following items: expressions of thanks, gratitude and condolences, information regarding holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders regarding city council events, reminders regarding community events, health and safety announcements. Let me go over here to my email. I've got from our public information office. COVID announcements. In case y'all have not heard, we are in stage five. Because of the governor's orders, masks are recommended. However, they are not required. We do have a vaccination event this Saturday, August 7th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at St. Peter's Episcopal Church, 3305 Pinnacle Cove. Please RSVP by noon on Friday, August 6th to request which vaccine you want. Austin Public Health needs to know which vaccines and how many, all three are available to choose from. School-aged young people are encouraged to come get vaccinated before school starts. Meredith, this is not included. Where do they RSVP? Is that on the Austin Public Health website? Is Meredith with us? Do we know where they RSVP at? All right, standby. We'll have to make sure that gets posted on the website or something.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I couldn't get my computer here working quickly enough. We do have it on the website and on Facebook. And let me pull that up real quick. Let's see. RSVP to J E, J E M D Z at gmail.com. I'll repeat, J E, J E M, D as in David, Z as in zebra, at gmail.com.
Was that, is that one JE or two JEs?
Two JEs.
So J E, J E. All right. Arch, I have to step out. If you will proceed, I will be back shortly.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have the mayor's email, so I'm not able to give you any more regarding any of those expressions of thanks, gratitude or condolences, or information regarding holiday schedules. Do we have anybody on council that would like to make any announcements regarding anything related to city council or community events or health and safety announcements? Mr. Sullivan?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Protem. Yes, the Lago Vista Lions Club will be holding a blood drive on August 21st. I'll be posting to social media tomorrow. It's going to be an abbreviated schedule from 8:30 to 12:30. It was getting too hot in the afternoon and they decided to back off a little bit, so there'll be fewer appointments. But bottom line is, please do sign up if you can. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything else to announce? If not, then we'll move into the regular part of the meeting. The first item is consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted in one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. The consent agenda items are three: approval of the May 20, 2021, and the June 17, 2021 regular meeting minutes, and four, approval of the joint election agreement for November 2nd, 2021 elections.
Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve.
Go ahead. Okay. I have a motion. I have a second.
I second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilor Sullivan and a second by Councilor Williams. Any, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signal by holding your hand up and saying aye, aye. Dis opposed, nay. Hearing done, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to number five on the agenda, public hearing and possible action, second consideration. The Lago Vista City Council will hold a public hearing and consider resolution number 21-1891, a resolution by the City Council of Lago Vista, Texas, adopting an update to the thoroughfare plan and providing related matters there too. This meeting is already open. I don't have a presentation to make. I believe the consultant made a presentation, but if the consultant would like to make further presentation, now is the time to do so.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Dabila, I'd be more than happy to. This is David Payne with Freezzen Nichols. If somebody wouldn't mind making me the presenter, I can, I have the, just a single image of the thoroughfare plan map to, to be able to share. Thank you very much. Since there was a small bit of confusion about that in the last meeting, just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page as they speak. This is also the same map included in the, the technical background or the, the item background posted on the city's website and part of the technical memo. So I'll speak for just four minutes, four to five minutes in summary to reiterate the major changes for the thoroughfare plan and then address two, two comments that, that came up in the, in the first reading, just to sort of revisit those to help prime up the conversation. Then more than happy to take any questions or comments from council members and/or staff to hopefully put everybody in a comfortable position to make a recommendation for the, for the thoroughfare plan update. So as a summary, there, there were really five major changes to, to this, what I will call them minor thoroughfare plan amendment as it informs the roadway impact fee. Really, the thoroughfare plan is, is the network as depicted in this plan achieves two primary things for, for the city. One is it, is it preserves thoroughfares and the ability to create transportation corridors from development? And the second is that it's really a coordination tool with other agencies in the development of those corridors. So that's the, the sort of endpoint as far as the thoroughfare plan. And the, the summary of the, the five changes to the thoroughfare plan, at this point, they are FM 1431 recommending that the right-of-way east of Loman Ford Road be preserved at 200 feet rather than the 150 feet for a principal arterial. The second is for, for minor arterials to really add a, a two-way left turn lane or, or a middle median to that roadway cross-section. That's going to do two things. It's going to make for a safer roadway. And secondly, it's going to make for a more competitive project in funding calls through the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization and Tech Dot. The third item, really applying more major collectors in the southern part of, of the city of Lago Vista, where we can right-size some of the roads that aren't necessarily considered through roads. That still provides for that two-way left turn lane, which, which makes for safer roadway corridors and separates left turns out of the, the through movement, which, which gives those roadways a little bit more capacity, even though it's narrower than a four-lane road and also makes them safer. The fourth item is exploring that a, an additional connection between Loman Ford and Boggy Ford Road, that little white dashed line in the center of the map there. Our, our projections do show that, you know, in the future, the, the intersection of Loman Ford Road and Boggy Ford Road, there's, there's a lot going on at that intersection in the future. It will continue to see increased pressure from development. And so taking some of that pressure off of that intersection will, will be a good thing to, to look and explore at. But that also includes some of the Travis County or not yet annexed area. So that's why it's a, it's a to-do item on this thoroughfare plan. And number five, the last thing really for recommended on corridors is it, is adding five feet for drainage to either side of, of the thoroughfare plan. The thoroughfare plan recommended right-of-way. And I also need to note that there are the ferry operations adding those as potentials to be explored. That's going to be important for future coordination with, with Travis County and, and Tech Dot. And this is one policy tool to help signal the exploration of those alternatives. So moving on to the, the two items that came up in the, the first reading, just to kind of reiterate what those were. The first had to do with Boggy Ford Road and the roadway classification west of Loman Ford Road, and whether or not that, that should be a major arterial roadway or a minor, sorry, a ma- major arterial minor or major collector roadway, and really how far along the roadway alignment it should be. Our current recommendation is for a major collection, major collector road to the, the intersection of Adams Cove or Constitution Drive. So that's where the current functional classification changes. At that point, the roadway network splits and so the divided, so the, the movements are also divided. And it also enters a fairly neighborhood oriented context, which, which is, is more suitable for, for lower speed roads and, and perhaps again, we're taking a lighter approach to the functional classification. But we did take another look at that in, in the, the two weeks since we had that first, that first conversation. And one of the conversations or one of the details that came up in that conversation was the potential to add turn lanes or turning movement days at some of the intersections west of Adams Cove or Constitution Drive. And really, we, we've taken a look at that again, and we believe that the recommended right-of-way for a minor collector would accommodate that. And so, in our view, the, whether to make that recommendation at individual intersections really becomes a development review, traffic impact assessment, or capital improvement plan level discussion. But, but the right-of-way dedication or requirement from the thoroughfare plan, the city should have sufficient right-of-way for that word to come up. And then the other item that came up was Dawn Drive, and specifically the, the functional classification of Dawn Drive after it leaves the, the commercial area and the, the traffic circle. And that, that functional classification is currently recommended as a major collector. And one of the suggestions was potentially that could be maybe a minor collector after the traffic circle. That also seems to be a, a reasonable recommendation. However, at this time, we were still recommending a major collector functional classification because it's paired with the recommendation for a future potential ferry operation. And there's no current plans to, to widen or make any, make any improvements to that section of roadway. This, this recommendation would just give the, the flexibility to the city to enter into those discussions. But we're certainly more than happy to revisit that recommendation if, if the council so wishes. With that, I'm going to want to thank y'all for your, your input, for all the valued contributions that we received, both at the planning and zoning stage and, and at the council. And I'm happy, both Eddie Haas and I with Freezzen Nichols are more than happy to answer any questions from the council or, or staff at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Do we have anybody on council that would like to, to ask further questions?
No, thank you for your input.
I don't see anybody. This is an open meeting. Still, still an open. This is still a public hearing, so it's still open. I'd like to ask a couple of questions. I, I don't know that this is necessarily going to, to lead to any changes of any sort. But I had some questions and I believe that I was also sharing the same ideas with Councilor Prince. When we asked, were there any traffic counts considered to this thoroughfare plan update? Responding from Mr. Payne?
Things are getting a little bit garbled. If councilmember Dabila, if I understand your question, you're asking if there were traffic counts conducted as part of this thoroughfare plan update. There, the answer is yes. We conducted approximately 10 traffic count, traffic count locations independent for the thoroughfare plan and roadway impact fee portion of the study. But the recommendations from this portion of the overall project are, are based primarily on future traffic projections that, that take into account those counts, but they're really based on future traffic generation at, at more of a, an expected or build-out level of development. That's one of the tools that the, the 2009 study gave to the city of Lago Vista, and we were able to, to use that, that lens, if you will, to, to, to do some of those, those future traffic projections that are included in the techno. So I hope that helps.
Thank you. Yeah, I would be interested in knowing, because I haven't really looked at detail, the details of the thoroughfare plan. Are those places where the, the traffic counts taken, are they listed in your thoroughfare plan?
They will be listed in the impact fee portion of, of the project, but those, that's, that's still yet to come. So Ed Haas, hello, councilmember Dabila, can you hear me okay? Hello, check, check?
Yeah, we got you, David. We got you.
Okay, yes, sir. So those, those, those councilmember, those locations are included in impact.
Yeah, Mayor Protem, Dabila's internet is not the greatest, and so I think he's freezing up. So you're getting so active.
Yeah, so if I could add on to David's comment, we, we use the peak hour data for those 10 locations that were collected. That's going to be the basis in which the roadway impact fee program is predicated on. So we did collect data there, those 10 locations, and we'll have a graphic in the, in the report, the impact fee report of those locations. But if, if there's, if there's a graphic that you need sooner than later, we can probably gin that up pretty quickly.
Mayor Protem, I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Turn my camera off, just in case that is a part of my internet problem. Yes, I can hear you.
Were you finished with your questions, Mayor Protem?
Yes, I was.
Okay, is all right if I ask a question?
Do you have some?
Yes, sir. Thank you. David Nibbin, I was just going to ask
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. I was just going to ask with regard to the Dawn Drive determination that you guys made. I mean, did you, did you go drive the road? And the reason why I ask is you, you leave the traffic circle and you head down the hill. There are parts, but parts of that road that, it, it just falls off a cliff. And, and so the, the thought of it being a major collector at some point, it, it just doesn't seem very reasonable. And so I just was curious, you guys, I, I understand you wanted to keep it that way, to keep the, the ferry thing option alive, but quite frankly, I think that's a pipe dream too, but, but I just don't understand how that road could become. But, but I just don't understand how that road could become a major collector at some point, given the topography there.
Yes, again, it's a very, very reasonable observation and question. The alternative and the recommendation for a major collector is really based on the existing section of Dawn Drive as it goes by the commercial area where it's a four lane undivided roadway. That's a little bit over capacity as it currently is. So there's the opportunity to right size that roadway for, you know, with, with future conversations, obviously not anything that would happen based off of just this conversation, but providing, you know, maybe bike lanes, having a two way left turn in that section. So that was the main focus of Dawn Drive. But in conversation with Travis County and the Texas Department of Transportation, they were interested in the alternatives for a ferry operation in the discussion that could happen. But there's, there's not an engineering assessment for this, this recommendation. So it could be a council action to say, you know, based on our understanding of the, of the area, that that's not something that we're comfortable with, with carrying forward for an engineering evaluation or for the, for the Travis County assessment, and that could be removed.
Okay. And I'll just, the four lane portion of Dawn, no issues whatsoever. But once you get past the traffic circle and you head down, down the hill towards the Marina, that's where it just becomes not, not feasible. And so I, to be honest with you, if I had my druthers, I would, you know, take that out.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Anybody else on council have any further questions? Anybody in the audience with any further questions? A hearing, none?
Mayor Protem, you have Darcy with her hand up.
I'm sorry, I can't see that. Oh, I see you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Sorry. I would ask this, I guess, just to cancel, because I was up on 1431 the other day, and I thought, you know, these truck drivers that are turning into those businesses, they actually turn across 1431. They wait, they hold up traffic a little bit. But if you put meridians in there and break that all up, you better give those trucks someplace to turn around when they overshoot their location. Because I actually saw the guy give up and go all the way down to the, oh, what's that other home thing that's there? Sorry. Oh, gosh, the one that's going towards Cedar Park. And that's where he had to turn around. He had to get his rig in that little location and get it back out across the lane of highway again and back across 1431. So I would just make sure that if something's going up across 1431 that's dividing that road, that, that people who drive can get into your establishments. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Payne, would you have a response to that?
Thank you for the comment. Very important consideration are trucks and turning movements. And that's exactly the kind of detail that, that any implementing agency, whether it's Travis County or the, in this case, it would be the Texas Department of Transportation, would look at during a, during a design process in, in cooperation and coordination with the city of Laguna Vista. And with additional opportunities for public involvement, this is, that would all be very much down the road. And there's, I need to sort of reiterate or repeat from the first reading that there's no planned or programmed improvements for 1431 in, in any of the material that we've been reviewing or provided.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Archie, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
At what stage would 1431 be a consideration by Texas? And to widen it? What needs to happen before that becomes a reality?
Yeah, so that's a great, a great question that has to do with project development and the different stages of project development, so that it happens through input from, from folks like yourself and the city to, to request improvements on roadways. The district engineer takes all of that input. And also, the state takes that input through the Unified Transportation Program. So what is that? It's a, it's a planning and funding process that happens every year. Conversations about what to fund, just the same way that the city has annual budget processes. So which projects are recommended or make it into that process is a, is a very, it can be a very long process, a very time consuming process. So the first thing would be, you know, is it in thoroughfare plans like this? And then, you know, does it have the, the pressure or the emphasis from, from local residences and, and elected officials to get a project like that into the hopper for consideration and improvement? And then the last part is, you know, there's, there's ways to accelerate that process. And one of them is through funding calls through the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. Those happen every two to four years where those are competitive projects that can be nominated by, by cities, by the county, or even by the state, or the RMA or whatnot. And then those projects are put into a competitive process to try and, and say which ones would be more cost effective to move forward. So those are all different ways that those projects could be accelerated or moved through the project development process. And that's, that's a long and winding answer, but the truth is, it's not a simple process to get a project funded.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Does anybody else have any further questions? Well, I see that the mayor's back, so I will turn this meeting back over to the mayor. Mayor Tidwell?
Well, okay. Thank you. I do need to ask though exactly where we're at. I know we're on the thoroughfare plan. What portion are we in?
The, this is the consultations, the consultant's presentation. It's still an open.
All right, so we need to open it up for council to ask questions.
Yeah, more or less.
Mayor, we've already, council has asked questions and, and the public was given the opportunity to ask questions already.
I believe there was one citizen that was requesting a comment that we've not called on yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, it's, I'm reading Talitha Wheatley, if you can see her on there.
Okay, thank you very much, because no, all I can see is like little thumbnails. So, yes, Ms. Wheatley, you have the floor.
Speaker. Push the button.
We can hear you.
There we go. Thank you. So my concern was with the talking of Boggy being a major throwaway after, not throwaway necessarily, but after Constitution. And I feel like Boggy is just an accident waiting to happen every time anybody drives on that road. Like, I'll steer, the houses are like one foot away from that road. That's just a scary thought for me already. I mean, I've heard of people really requesting to lower the speed limit from 40 to 30 or 35. So to hear that that could possibly be, you know, considered a major, you know, thoroughfare, like that, that's really concerning to me. I mean, I can't tell you how many deer up down on the side of the road, just driving into town or whatever, and just people speeding and up and down. And even I talked to a police officer, and he said, it's not the speed, it's just way too fast. It needs to be lowered, you know? So that's my concern about Boggy, honestly, but just wanted to speak my two cents.
All right, thank you. I don't know if they, they covered this, but we, the staff and, and will be considering some safety traffic situations later on in a few weeks or, or so regarding safety issues. When it comes to these actual roads and this thoroughfare plan, it's, it's the purpose that it serves that gives it its name. So because it's, there are so many of the other streets that dump into Boggy, you know, whether it's two lanes and the speed limit's 40 or 30 or, the, the purpose of that street is still going to be a major collector or whatever it's designated, just because of what dumps onto it and the purpose of that road. So we understand the safety issues and we will be looking at that. But that doesn't actually change the function of that road, if that helps any. Anybody else from the audience? All right, I can't see you, so if you do, you'll have to just speak up at me. All right. If you don't mind, could you, since that's all my questions, can you take the screen away so I can see everybody? Thank you very much. And if that is everybody, then this is the second hearing on this. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:04, and I will open it up to council discussion and possible action.
Mayor, if I might?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So while you were gone, I just had asked a question about Dawn from the traffic circle down towards the Marina. They decided to leave it as a major collector to help support the future ferry plan. I question whether that made much sense. I would just be curious to get other council members' feedback on that. I do believe we should move forward with the thoroughfare plan tonight, so we can move on with the impact fee deal as well. But I would just know, want to know if anybody else has the same concern that I do on that one. So if we make a motion, do we want to include dropping that?
My question to that would be because of the, again, because these names refer to the purpose by changing the name of it. I mean, are you looking at making it minor as opposed to major? I mean, because it's still going to be a collector no matter what, because of what, what pumps into it.
Yes, sir. You know, a minor collector would be fine. I just, because I think if you just determine it as a major collector, you're talking about needing to widen it much more extensively than as a minor collector. And I just don't think that area supports that.
Okay, so what's the right of way difference between a minor and a major?
A good question.
That would be 10 feet, sir.
Okay. So we would lose 10 feet of right of way by changing it from a major to a minor? That's the way I understand it?
That's correct.
I mean, I understand, I just don't know if we want to lose that, that possible right of way if we do need it, you know? I don't know. I guess we could come back at a later time and upgrade it, but I don't know, I don't know how that process works if we drop it down. It's Councilor Prince.
I, and again, this has been an education process, I think, certainly for me, maybe others on council and probably some of the citizens as well, as to what the purpose of this document is. I'm understanding the recommendation from the Freezing Nichols team to basically keep this section of Dawn as a major collector for potential future use when it makes sense. And there's a, there's kind of a use case. And so I can understand that, and it's maybe the more conservative approach to hold on to more right of way, Mayor, which I, is I think the point that you're making, it's a good point. Taking that argument, given that argument, I frankly don't understand why we wouldn't apply the same logic to the section of Boggy Ford that I brought up several times, which is to say, let's reserve more right of way space. You know, maybe there's problems with actually making use of it. And to Ms. Wheatley's point, this is not about making the road faster and bigger, it's, it's about resizing the road to make it safer for the traffic that's already there. So, so to me, I think we've got to pick one or the other. We either are saying, let's be conservative in holding right of way, in which case, the section of Dawn that Mr. Sullivan is asking about makes sense to call it a major collector. I would argue, we should also extend the major collector portion of Boggy Ford. If, on the other hand, we're going to take the approach that the Freezing Nichols team seems to be recommending on Boggy Ford, which is that, you know, we'll, we'll kind of squeeze in turn, or the city can squeeze in turn lanes on, you know, future projects on there and get by with it being a minor collector. I don't understand why the same logic would not be applied to Dawn. So I think we've got to, you know, pick one of the two processes. I would propose that it would be in the city's better interest to propose both of these, kind of upscale both of them to reserve more right of way. So retain the section that's between the Marina and the, the traffic circle on Dawn as major collector, so that we have the right of way, the correct, you know, the bigger air coverage on right of way. But let's do the same thing, extending Boggy Ford, so we have more, I'll say, again, use the same term, more air coverage for right of way. So we would not only go from Lomond's Ford to, to the split with Highland Lakes, which is what the map currently shows, we would extend it all the way. I think the right answer is all the way to American, frankly, and make that, give that major collector designation and associated right of way reservation.
So would you consider Highland Lake in that as well?
Well, here's my thinking, I probably would not, Mayor. Here's my thinking, in, in the packet, the team actually showed some traffic counts, which I really appreciate. I'd been asking about that last time, and it's on page 47 of the packet. And it looks like the number, the current number is about 6,700 cars per day, measured on Boggy Ford at peak, measured on Boggy Ford near to Lomond's. So my personal anecdotal evidence would say 75% of that traffic heads on Boggy Ford and 25% hands on, heads on Highland Lakes. So I think, in my mind, it would be imperative to apply that to Boggy Ford. Highland Lake has a, I believe, I mean, they don't have a traffic study in here, so there's no engineering data. My perception, since I drive that on a regular basis, is Highland Lakes is much lower traffic than Boggy past the split.
Okay, would any future development down around American and Highland have any? Would that?
It certainly could. Actually, the, one of the projects we're looking at tonight could add quite a bit more traffic, and that traffic might well come out on Highland Lakes rather than on Boggy Ford.
All right. Mr. Haas, to that point, is there any reason why Boggy Ford could not be considered a major collector?
I, you know, and it's a great comment about preserving additional right of way versus less. We just feel that the residential nature of the Highland Estates area, whether you're in a two lane divided or a two lane undivided, still two lanes. We just, if you upgraded, then you're, you're anecdotally saying you're going to potentially ultimately implement a three lane section, which we just don't think is going to be needed because of the forecasted volume. We think that the two lane minor collector will suffice additionally with turn lane movements at key intersections throughout the residential area. We just feel that that is, is going to be the better, the better result, particularly because you're in a neighboring area. Now, yet true, we see some development opportunity down along Highland, near the American, American Drive area, but the volume suggests that the minor collector should have plenty of capacity to support that. So we would stick with our recommendation there. You know, I'm going to, I mean, if I could jump back on to the Dawn Drive situation there, if, if that potential ferry location is removed, we're all, we agree. The downsizing of Dawn after the traffic circle, we just don't know what the implication's going to be if there is a ferry operation, what that need is. Yes, we have been in the area. Yes, there will be topo issues that would have to be engineered. But if that's not a future location for a potential ferry crossing that's taken off the map, then yeah, by all means, we're in favor of reducing that. That's taken off the map, then yeah, by all means, we're in favor of reducing that.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If if the if Travis County was to put a ferry down at the end of the Marina. Who would be responsible for for widening that road all the way down to the Marina? Is it the county that would take over widening that road, or you're requesting the city to take over that?
Why? I don't know, quite honestly. Who would be paying for that? I don't see a burden. A burden created by a county improvement. I would think there'd be some assistance because it's a county initiative. I don't see that solely as being a city issue. But it's difficult to say, given funding issues. David, is there anything you can add on that?
Arch, I gotta step away again.
David, is there anything you can add on the funding issue?
I think I saw David leave a second ago. He might have got kicked off.
Oh, okay.
Because if it's if if there's some responsibility of the city, I would agree with Kevin. If if it's something that the county and Travis County is going to do. At the point where they decide they're going to put a ferry down there, then I would leave it as it is. And us have the additional space for the.
Right.
When you decide it a road.
You know, as a as a guiding policy document, I think that's the safe play, given the uncertainty of that. If Lago Vista were just flat out. Against that location altogether, just no way, that's just not not going to be an opportunity. Then you might make that change now, but given that there's some uncertainty, that might be the safe play now.
Thank you.
Back on to Boggy Ford Highland, though, I am sticking with my minor collector recommendation. Simply because it's a residential area, we just. The the forecasted lower volumes. Doesn't don't justify it, and we think that intersection improvements would be able to address the issue long term. Or it would be our recommendation to leave it as a minor.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. I'd like to recognize Ms. Marion. Go ahead, Council Marion.
Thank you, Mayor Roten. So I actually was. Wanting to voice some support for what Counselor Prince mentioned earlier and. Reinforce before the mayor mentioned it, I was thinking the same thing, that if there is some sort of future development that's going to take place down. By American and Highland. I would actually suspect that. The majority of that traffic will will enter and leave Lago Vista through Highland Lake, because it's it's going to be quicker than them going all the way around. On Boggy Ford. And I I feel like that could potentially, you know, depending on what ends up happening. Add quite a bit of of traffic. To Highland Lakes. So, you know, I don't, I don't know if the right answer is minor collector or major collector, but I certainly think that we should be thinking about that and thinking forward. Because the building that's taking place here in Lago is only going to get. Or is only going to increase with time, and there's a whole lot of of. Building that's taking place down here off of the Boggy Ford. Island Lake, American area. So I actually think to me, it makes sense to make, if nothing else, Boggy Ford, a major collector down through American. But it all connects. So, you know, you go around Boggy Ford, of course, you come out on Highland Lake. So it's just one big circle, and I'm just wondering if it would it make sense to make that whole thing? The same. Waiting, again, kind of thinking forward a bit, since these aren't done, I mean, the one you're modifying is from oh nine, right? These aren't done every like two years to make. Adjustments, if I'm not mistaken. So it might be wise to be thinking, you know, some number of years down the road.
So we we thought about that, and and someone mentioned that they're they're privy to development potential, but we thought about what. Amount of development could be left in the trip generation characteristic out of that. And when you're down, you know. South of the the Boggy Ford split, as you're going through the the residential area down toward the lake. We still, we're forecasting anywhere in the seven thousand daily trip range, which is nice for a collector, minor collector level. It would have to be a pretty intense development to kick it up. By five thousand trips. That's a load. That's that's five hundred single family residential dwelling units. And so we just, we're thinking, okay, what's the development potential down there? Okay, maybe there's a mixed use. X number of condos, maybe some retail, you know, I don't know. But we just, we just couldn't see it, given the setback requirements of things that it would be enough to really warrant. You know, but I I get your point there. I mean, it's a, you know, if you feel that, you know, want to play it conservative only because. You know, development potential that might create that demand, well, you know. But we just, we're not seeing it.
Council Prince?
Thank you, Mayor. Whoops.
You muted.
You muted.
Yeah, I'm hitting the button too many times. I actually want to ask Mr. Haas a question because it may be I'm thinking about this wrong. The mindset that I'm bringing to this discussion is. We're hearing from many citizens. We heard it from Ms. Wheatley a minute ago. It's my personal perception that Boggy Ford currently is. Very dangerous in its current configuration. And so my thinking was by designating it as a heavier traffic, bigger road, that leaves the city. More flexibility to do things that enhance the safety on that road. So that's kind of my thinking. I mean, it's it's in my mind. The current amount of traffic during rush hour, the the traffic that's coming on and off, the curves that are on the road, all of that leads to. What I believe is a fairly unsafe condition on that road now. And I I can easily imagine in six to eight years, we've got double the traffic we have now. And so with, you know, the builds that are under contemplation. So I'm thinking, maybe I'm thinking about it wrong, but I'm thinking that by designating it as a major collector, that leaves the city more flexibility to do things to deal with that growing traffic problem. Is that is that the wrong way to think about it? Because I feel like you're you're thinking about it differently.
You're right. I mean, we need to be forward thinking of this on this issue, and we need to be proactive. We need to leave ourselves the position that we have proactively planned for this, so we're not. Reactively having to address things later. There, there was a TIA we took a look at there at the southwest corner of Boggy Ford and Lowman Ford. I can't remember the name. Residential three hundred and some odd dwelling units there. You know, they had an existing count. Of about eight hundred vehicles in the peak hour. And that's both directions. So it's about five hundred, a little over five hundred in the southbound direction. This is kind of at Boggy Ford as you approach Lowman. Three hundred in the northbound direction. You know, the carrying capacity of on a per lane level of service D, which is, you know, fairly congested. Level of service C is like desirable, but so is D, only because of the cost to mitigate. You're you're six hundred, six fifty, somewhere in there is where you're comfortably at as as a capacity level. So you're. Kind of getting close to that as things continue to grow. Yeah, obviously. With the the growth and development. At at Lowman Ford area, okay, but when you get down into that residential area, we're. And we, you know, the thoroughfare plan actually has a wider section, right? We got some shoulders, we got, you know, bike lane. It's more comfortable. Right now, you're in more of constrained situation. Based on its current standard. It's not the ultimate where it might feel a little bit more and maybe some of the. Curves might be cleaned up a little bit as it's reengineered, things like that, where possible, because there'd be some right of way issues. So. I, you know, it could go either way, quite honestly. We're just. Just trying to forecast the development opportunity down on the lake, which just felt like we. A minor could would be sufficient, but there's nothing wrong with being proactive on it. And then in five years, taking a look at it at or ten years or whenever the next go around is, and. Maybe some development patterns have changed, or something's not going to be down there by the lake, then making a change. So we're we're not opposed to it, but. What we're seeing justifies it, the the minor, if you will.
I give this to Haas. I see two more hands up. So if you would hang on, I think. Council Sullivan asked to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend. So. Mr. Haas, I think you were saying that you would need to have five hundred residential units down there to kind of justify jumping to the higher level.
More or less. It depends on the type of development. I'm just equating. Single family residence, one trip in the peak hour, ten trips in the daytime during the daily. So I'm just kind of thinking ballpark. So don't, we're not hanging on a specific scenario.
Yeah, I'm not trying to nail you down to anything. I just wanted to give you some additional information, and that is, you know, people talked about something that we're going to be talking about a little bit later tonight. And that's a single development down there for condos that would potentially have two hundred and twenty five units. Down at American and Highland. So I I guess what I'm saying, and and that doesn't even count. The hundreds and hundreds of lots that are down there that are future development possibilities for single family homes. So I just, I just want to make sure that you're fully aware of those things. I think Mr. Prince makes a very compelling argument for making that a major. Collector. And and then. The second point I was going to make is, as you talked about Boggy and Highland. You talk about it winding through, you know, neighborhoods, and and you were very emphatic about that, but yet. The same thing is true over on Dawn. And, you know, you just, it was poo-pooed. So, I mean, well, absent the ferry. Scenario, there would be absolutely no way that you would make that a major collector over there, because it winds through a a neighborhood. And there, I mean, it's almost built out over in that area. You're not going to generate more traffic absent the ferry scenario. So the only thing that's driving that is the ferry scenario, which to me is pie in the sky bullshit, and I don't know why we're planning for it in the first place.
Technical term there, okay, but it's a it's creating a. It's creating a connection to an area across the river of with development opportunity. Which in turn is going to generate traffic. So the thinking is, if there is some operation there. And. Volume will tend to increase, just even for sightseeing sake, who knows what. There is the potential for improvements. To maintain that status road, right? If that is not even going to be on the table, and then then by all means, I would say, take it off. But the fact is, we don't know. Better to be on the conservative side of that. So. That's kind of that scenario. You mentioned two hundred and twenty five. Townhomes, or I can't remember what it condos. Hundreds and hundreds, I'm guessing three hundred. Okay, so I'm just doing a back of the napkin number crunch. Let's be about. About five thousand. Fifty five hundred trips, which will kick that into a twelve thousand range, which is still adequate at a minor collector. But that's just back of the napkin. Don't know what the future holds. If you feel like. That, you know, that two twenty five could be a mixed use, you know, retail, who knows what going on down there, restaurants or something, and I. No, okay. This, then maybe we play conservative on the Highland side. We're just from our assessment of what the future land use, your future land use plan, what's left, and I'm just guessing three hundred. Single family dwelling units plus your two twenty five, you know, a little number crunch here. We think that the miner is going to get it, but you know what? If you feel like it's better to play it safe, fine, let's play it safe. Let's go major collector on Highland down to American.
Now, I appreciate your response, and I apologize for my technical term there earlier.
That's passion. That's passion for community. That's that's in bounds.
Yes, and and the only, the last comment I would make is is that I'm I'm looking out for the people who live along Dawn. There is no desire whatsoever for a ferry in sightseers coming through there, none. And so, quite frankly, I I almost hate entertaining the thought of a ferry through there. Because there's no desire for it from from this side. So I just, I'm going to shut up, but I'm going to tell the rest of the council. My humble opinion is the the Boggy Highland Loop should be a major, and Dawn should be taken down to a minor, and I'll be quiet. Thank you.
David's back on the line. If I could ask him. Anything about the process of the ferries. David, we had a discussion about. You know, why major, bring it back to minor, okay.
Hearing it, and I just go ahead. I was listening to your phone, but I just didn't have access to unmute myself. So the. Who would develop that? That would be through, you know, a much developed process, much more robust. Public involvement, project development process. The the next step would have to be Travis County looking at the feasibility of. Any of these connections. So that's still, that still would be much yet to come. But, you know, the the input that we're receiving, you know, certainly, it at least has the. The the energy to to remove that at this stage from from consideration. For the reasons stated, and that's and that's quite frankly, you know, good enough. But as far as who would for who would pay for that, it would be, you know, potentially, I could see one of three different entities. Implementing that. It would either be Travis County or TexDOT or some kind of future. You know, pay pay type ferry situation like like TexDOT operates down on the coast. Those would be the three implementing. And and more importantly, for the city of Lago Vista, funding avenues that would that would make that happen. And none of that happens without first Travis County picking up a feasibility study for any of these connections.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. I think that there's one other council member that would like to ask a question. Council Marion, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend. I actually just have one final quick question. So. What what do we lose? Or is there anything to lose if we? Modify. Boggy and Loop a major collector. You know, do we lose anything if we if we make that modification? Or, you know, are we just?
Now, if I if I heard you correctly, you were kind of cutting in and out of there. Is there a negative to to upgrading that? The only thing I, my thought is, and I'm relating it to two scenarios or two items here. From a neighborhood perspective, your single family residential on the Boggy Ford side west of where Highland splits off. I mean, I just, I'm looking at the aerial, and maybe there are hundreds of undeveloped lots. I'm not seeing them, but. I just, you know, neighborhood integrity, we we hear all the time, why do you want to put a highway through our neighborhood and all that kind of stuff? Well, here we are going the other way. We want to keep it small because we don't want to encourage higher speed. Not to say that it's not, it would be designed for higher speed. It's still a collector. You'd still want it relatively low. If there are some bike lanes, or who knows if there's a sidewalk and all that stuff, who knows long term, maybe. You want to still want to keep it slow, but it's neighborhood in general and. And. If there is going to be the desire, you know, to make some improvements, yeah, you have it covered by a larger functional class. You might not need all the right of way that with that major. I just, we're thinking from the neighborhood perspective, and I'm relating that specifically to, is anyone familiar with Highland Village up in the in the Metroplex area? It's. Lakeside Community Mobile, the old mobile development. It is a very similar. Development akin to what you all have, single family residential through some. Winding winding roads, and they used to have a four lane, a four lane facility. And they downsized it to two lane. With by me, but they maintained some of some turn lanes at key intersections. And the very first time I drove through, I thought, oh, this is going to be a nightmare. This is going to, they're creating havoc. This is going to be a mess. It works. I've been through there many, many a time on on. Recreational trips and looking and observing at it, and it works fine. But, you know, I I I get your position about being. Being proactive and just to be sure, but I just. If anything, I might say the Highland Shore side only because that's where your development potential is, and I guess the opportunity for still hundreds of lots. Just my two cents there.
And thank you, Mr. Haas. Mr. Payne, go ahead.
If I may, the the, there's a another difference between the Boggy Ford west of. Of the intersection and and Dawn Drive, and that's the number of of households that front on the roadway. So, you know, that there's just a slightly different character. You know, some of those houses also front on High Drive, so they don't necessarily have their sole access off of Boggy Ford. But that, you know, that would all be theoretically, that would all be part of the consideration. But that, you know, that would all be theoretically, that would all be part of the consideration for once a roadway with improvements, you know, started going through the engineering and the preliminary design stage, there would be, you know, a lot more interest and involvement once, you know, once one of those details and surveys and all that came through. But I do just want to caution, that's a much more robust roadway. So, you know, there would also be significant costs signaled that that would be, you know, be, be being looked at for the, for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Mr. Prince, I think would like to add some more.
Thank you. So a comment, and then I want to clarify a question. So I'm looking at the material you, you folks have provided to us tonight in the packet. And I think many citizens may not be aware of the speed limits. When we're talking about minor collector versus major collector, in your document, the design range for speed limits for a minor collector, which is what you're recommending for the section of road under debate here, is between thirty and thirty-five miles an hour. The design speed for a major collector, which at least a couple of us here are arguing might be a better choice, is the same lower end, thirty, but it's up to forty-five. So thirty to forty-five versus thirty to thirty-five between the two. And then I'll point out that the current speed limit right now, today, in that section of road is forty. And the road is actually, if I look in your picture diagram of what a minor collector looks like, not, not even up to major collector, but the current road is not even as wide as the picture you show for minor collector. So we're kind of, we're in the worst of all scenarios here where we're allowing traffic to go faster than the speed which would be recommended from an engineering perspective for minor collector. And yet it's not even as wide as a minor collector today. So I guess what I'm saying, I'm trying to figure out, you know, how much should we correct that in terms of the thoroughfare plan? And how much should we just leave that to our, you know, engineering development work and safety improvements, which the city's already working on? That's my comment. Feel free to, to respond to that. But the specific question I have for you is Mr. Sullivan proposed that the entire Bogey Ford Highland Lakes Loop be upgraded to major collector. What I heard you say was the Highland Lakeside from the split back to American. And I wanted to clarify whether you were comfortable with taking his proposal for the entire loop or not.
I just, you know, this is just my opinion based on the data and our evaluation of development. I would say that it's more on the Highland side. I just flat out don't see it on the, on the, as a full loop. Mainly because what I've seen in, in other lakeside-type community developments, and that a two-lane works fine. You know, the minor collector, you're correct, you're you have a two-lane roadway that's narrow, it doesn't have a whole lot of shoulders. And it's posted at a higher speed, and someone was commenting about, we need to lower the speed. That might be option number one, lower the speed to increase safety. But i- if, if Bogey Ford and Highland are, are adjustments are made to it and they, and they're made to conform with the thoroughfare plan, I think they're probably going to be sufficient roadway. It'll feel more comfortable. At the same time, we're, we're not trying to put a facility down there to encourage speed. It's neighborhood. And that's what we want long-term, is neighborhood, not non-neighborhood, if you will. So if anything, my professional opinion, it would be the Highland Lakeside, because that's where I see the development potential along the lake.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Is there any further discussion from council? Okay, if that's the case, then I'll close this public meeting at seven thirty-seven. And if there's any further council discussion, let's have it now. Otherwise, we will will either close this with some action or we'll have to continue it. So possible decision, possible action?
My suggestion would be that we, we'd make a motion and close this out tonight. Let's come to, let's come to a conclusion, not just string it out again. And I think fundamentally, there's one of, you know, two extreme options. One where we say, let's, let's accept the plan as is, or let's accept the plan with modifications to some of the things we've discussed here tonight, whether it's, you know, the northern section of Dawn, whether it's the entire Highland Lakes Bogey Loop, whether it's just the Highland Lakes section. So I, I think, you know, between the council folks, we've got to decide which, if any, of those changes we want to, we want to ask the, the team to make in order to accept the thoroughfare plan. My personal view would be I, I, I feel a little more strongly on the Bogey Ford side. So I think that the, I'd like to see the loop. I, you know, I'm, I'm I'm in favor of accepting what's already been offered on the Highland Lakeside from Mr. Haas. And, and, and I could, I could kind of go either way with Mr. Sullivan or, or not on the Dawn side. But, you know, I lean towards adding Bogey Ford to that. So I, I think I've, I've said all I need to say. I just want to hear from some other council folks.
Ms. Williams?
I'm fine with the Bogey Ford making it allowing us to have additional right-of-way to, to figure out what the, what the plan should be. As far as Dawn, I, I just see it so far out that it, we'd probably do another thoroughfare plan five or six years down the road, and they're not going to have any idea about a ferry at all by that time. So I'm fine with us just leaving that as is. But, you know, if Kevin really feels strongly about closing that out, I don't, I don't have a problem with that either. That's how I feel.
Okay, well, then it's open for action. Can I make a motion?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion that we accept Resolution twenty-one eighteen ninety-one with the following modifications, that the Highland Lake Bogey Ford Loop be upgraded to a major collector and that the Dawn extension north of the traffic circle be lowered to a minor collector.
And what about the ferry crossing?
And remove the ferry crossing.
Thank you.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, then all of those in favor, by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Hearing that, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Haas, Mr. Payne.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your time, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I will move on then to item number six, under public hearing and possible action of first consideration. Item number six, the Lago Vista City Council will hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance of the City Council of Lago Vista, Texas amending the official zoning map by changing Lot one-one-one-one, that's one thousand one hundred and eleven, Lot one thousand one hundred and twelve, and Lot one thousand one hundred and thirteen of Lago Vista Estates, Section Four, and generally described as being located at sixty-eight oh five, sixty-nine oh one, and sixty-nine oh three Redwood Drive from the C-one-C Professional Business Office Low Density Retail Zoning District to the C-two Commercial Large, Large-Scale Zoning District, together with a required design review and provided for related matters. And I'll open this hearing, this public hearing at seven forty-two. Mayor's presentation, I'm sorry, I don't have a presentation, but would invite the applicant to make his presentation at this point.
Good evening. Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Brad Carter from Lago Vista Marine. I'm here seeking approval for a zoning change from C-one to C-two for the property located at sixty-eight oh five, sixty-nine oh one, and sixty-nine oh three Redwood Drive in order to purchase the property and relocate my existing business to that location. I've been serving the Lago Vista community for over twenty-seven years and hope to continue serving the community for many more years to come. Also in attendance is Terry Haygood from Haygood Engineering and Andrew Klemmer from Spencer Pierce Architecture in case you have any questions concerning site plan that's been submitted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. This is an open public meeting. Do we have any questions or concerns from the council? Mr. Prince had his hand up first.
Mayor, Mayor Protim, I, I wonder, I would find it helpful if we could get city staff to kind of summarize comments on the, on the proposal here before we enter into further discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Jambore?
Yes, sir. Essentially, the, the majority of the discussion related to the site plan, the required design review, if you will, it was pretty simple at P and Z. They thought the compliance with the existing ordinance would handle all the issues except for one that they felt very strongly about, to protect the residential potential of Redwood Drive. They wanted the bay doors turned away from, from Redwood Drive. They didn't, weren't concerned about the materials or the looks. It was the impact of the open doors that they were concerned about. And we worked very diligently with the applicant. It took some time. The P and Z was comfortable that the staff could get that done. We did. The design that's in your ordinance, not the one that's in the previous packet, is one that complies with all the recommendations of P and Z.
Thank you, Mr. Jambore. Council? Questions? Mr. Prince?
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I think this is primarily addressed to Mr. Jambore. Can, can you comment on in, in our, our code, our planning and zoning code, that Section three dot thirteen dot twenty, the three conditions for consideration of zoning change? And I'll preface that by saying, as I read the future land use map, it looks like the area kind of around this is designated as commercial, but in the, in the future land use map, this area is color-coded something called office slash retail, which I guess corresponds to C-one-C. Was there any discussion of these, these three conditions in the Muni code? And whether any or all of them applied to this zoning change, Mr. Jambore?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, we even talked about the changes we made previously to the future land use map further south of this property. Quite frankly, had we noticed, we just assumed that the, the, the closer you got to fourteen thirty-one, that it would have already been C-two. Had we known it didn't, we would have changed it then. And, and let me put it this way, and like always, you know, a lot of ordinances include language that suggests that that first criteria is either changes have resulted or that the future land use map includes an error. Either of those is fine. Because, you know, quite frankly, you never know which it is unless you were there when the thing was devised. So I think the Planning Commission very definitely discussed that and acknowledged that we need to go back and change. If there's any more C-one on that side of Lomond Ford Road between there and fourteen thirty-one, that, that needs to be changed.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. And in fact, looking at the zoning map in the packet, I believe there is some C-one, both kind of north and south of this. But
We just weren't aware of it. When we, when we looked at it closer to Dawn, we just assumed that, you know, that once it hit C-two in a couple of places, it would keep going. It, it did not. And we don't really have a good explanation of why.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Mr. Williams?
I think it's also important to point out that during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the things that they were looking at in addition to that was the significant traffic hazard. And a traffic study was done, and it was shown that it's not a hazard that they would have to make it right in, right out off of Lomond Ford. My question on the on the back street, which is Redwood Drive, is I've driven up and down Redwood Drive, Roy, and is, is there going to be improvement that we do to Redwood Drive to allow for boats to go in and out on that street?
I would assume that the, the development will impact Eric's future consideration of what roads are priority. But, you know, once again, that's, that's part of what Eric does.
Okay. Because if, if, if the Marine is going to use that as a major way for boats to go in and out of his facility, there's going to have to be some improvement to that road for that to happen.
Yes, sir. I, I would, I would think you're correct. And I would think that Eric would react to that as this place is developed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, Mr. Jambore. I see that the mayor's back, so I'm going to catch him up on where we are. We are discussing item number six. And this is, this public hearing has been opened. I had no presentation to make. The applicant made his presentation, and that was followed up by staff presentation, which isn't on our agenda, but it was duly noted that it was something that was just omitted. So I'll turn it over to you at this point. We're still at the point of discussing both at the council level as well as turning it over and asking for input from our public. I think I saw a hand go up a second ago. No, I'll turn it over.
All right. All right, but we're still in council discussion right now, correct?
Yes. That's correct.
Okay.
All right, so Councilor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question for Mr. Jambore. You know, we talked about the fact that this is a right-in, right-out, and I believe that's what was implemented next to CDS off of fourteen thirty-one. And I see people left in constantly. And so I guess my question is, is there any way to build that entrance in such a way to where it's, it's impossible to do left in?
Yes, sir. And that, that's something that we will go through with the Site Development Plan Review. That was, in fact, if you want to compare the two site plans, the first one that was submitted does not meet ASHTO standards. And one of the reasons is, is because it doesn't preclude the improper turns. You have to make the, the geometry much more severe. And the other thing you do is, is you make the curve pretty tall and sharp to discourage that sort of thing. And we, we had a discussion with Mr. Haygood about the design, and, and we'll cover that at, at the Site Development Plan Review that's required when we do the, when we do the math. But yes, Eric, Eric made those comments, and it was discussed. And it's much better than what you're looking at now. It's, it might not be perfect still, but we'll get the engineers to argue about exactly what the geometry looks like. But it can be done if, if, if reviewed carefully.
Excellent. Okay, thank you so much.
Right. Anybody else on council? Councilman Marion?
Thank you, Mayor. So I had a similar concern, number one, about, you know, folks still turning left even though you make it a right-only. And it seems to me like the only way truly to, to put a stop to that is to put a median out in the road that folks would actually have to like, you know, go over it across from one side to the other, which I certainly understand there's not currently room in the road probably to do that. But taller, sharper, I still anticipate seeing people swing around and make a left turn there. So I had a concern about that. I also had a concern about any suggestion of folks driving boats to enter this facility on Redwood. I think that, you know, at some point, right, that back part's going to become residential. And I, I just, I'm not necessarily in favor of making the entrance in the back on, on Redwood. Recognize that pulling in and out on, on Lomond is probably also relatively unsafe, given the speeds going down that road, but, but I, and really, this next question I have here is for, is probably for Roy, but in reading the packet, I didn't see any strong argument to approve this. It seemed like in most of what I read, most of the bullets were kind of against or pointing out things that the site plan didn't do, or issues with the proposal, et cetera. I mean, there's a number of things that it's mentioned, you know, the pervious cover was an issue, and setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. So I think my question for, for staff is, have all of these things that were pointed out in these bullets here, every single one of them have been addressed, and staff has no more concerns? Would that be an accurate statement?
They have been addressed. That doesn't mean that the site development plan review will not tweak the geometry of the, what's called a pork chop, if you will, and things like that, that are a normal part of the administrative staff review of the site plan, but, but all the major issues that were talked about in the staff report have been addressed in the version that you're looking at in the ordinance. You know, the reason that wasn't addressed in the site plan or the staff report that, that was created previously is because the, the P and Z did not, you know, ask it to come back. They were comfortable making a recommendation that their approval is subject to these changes being made, and that they were just received only recently, if you will. But, but they have been addressed. There, there's none of the comments that, that were made at P and Z that were part of their, their recommendation that have not yet been addressed by the designers.
So just a quick follow-up, so point of clarification, so all of the bullets on pages sixty-two and sixty-three of our packet have been addressed?
Yes, ma'am. And, and you will see that they are, they are reiterated in the conditions that are in the ordinance on page fifty-four, and indicated as the corrections are all in the, what's called Exhibit B in that ordinance. You know, the bullets all refer to what was in the packet for P and Z. These are new design drawings, every one of them.
All right, anybody else on council? All right, that is it for council. It is a public hearing, so I'll open it up to the audience. I don't know that I had anybody that signed up for this agenda items. All right, I am not seeing anybody from the audience, so let me go back here to my packet. This is the first reading, so we will leave this public hearing open, and we will move on to agenda item number seven. We will do the second reading at the next meeting. Second consideration. All right, number seven, the Lago Vista City Council is holding a public hearing to consider an ordinance of the City Council of Lago Vista, Texas, amending the official zoning map regarding the current planned development district, PDD, known as the Peninsula, consisting of an approximately forty point six zero acre tract, commonly referred to as nineteen hundred American Drive, in order to modify the uses and development regulations established in ordinance number oh seven oh two dash one five dash oh one, and ordinance number zero eight dash oh eight dash twenty-one dash oh two, and providing for related matters. And I will open the public hearing at seven fifty-seven. Let me go to the cover sheet. Following this summary is attached the staff land use report specifically prepared for the city council in considering this application. It precedes some new information that was not included in the original packet, but was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to their recommendation. It includes the staff's attempt to provide a portion of the applicant's digital presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The balance of that presentation that is not included consisted of a video animation created by the architect for the project that will presumably be shown to the council during our meeting tonight. The new information also includes a more recent markup by the applicant of an amendment to the original PDD approval. Ordinance number zero eight dash zero eight dash two one dash zero two included minor amendments to ordinance number zero seven dash zero two dash one five dash oh one related to parcel B, the former drive boat facility parcel, now a covered boat and RV storage area, and parcel E, which is the garden areas parcel. Regardless, the proposed ordinance reflects the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission rather than either of those markups. All new information is followed by the original packet and staff's land use report that remains unchanged since published prior to the July eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Several owners of property within the development known as the Cove of Lago Vista spoke at the public hearing conducted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. While there were some aspects of the proposed amendment that they favored, on balance, it was clear that they were speaking in opposition to the most, to most changes, particularly any increase in the maximum heights. Moreover, their written opposition is included in the portion of the packet presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on July eighth. However, according to the GIS manager, their written opposition does not meet the twenty percent threshold required by state statute and section thirteen dot two zero E three B I I of the Lago Vista zoning ordinance that would mandate approval of a supermajority, or three fourths, of the council members to adopt the proposed amendment. The Planning and Commission, Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the amendment to the current PD, PDD as reflected in the proposed ordinance. Six of the seven members were present, I believe that was actually five, we've got a correction on that, five of the seven members were present at the meeting and participated in the deliberation and recommendation. This time, Roy, is there anything staff would like to add to that, possibly regarding the land use or the summary?
Yes, sir. If you, if you, if I may, since this was published a week ago, we have received two additional written comments since that, and there is no deadline, if you will, for that twenty percent. Just prior to this meeting, Aaron and I were working diligently, and we verified that there is now, the twenty percent threshold has been met, and a supermajority will in fact be required for approval.
All right.
I needed Aaron's help. There's certain research I couldn't do without her. Secretary of State websites over my head.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. All right, and let's see, go back up here. The applicant, do I have the applicant that I believe they're in attendance, are they not? Mia Hernandez?
Yes, sir. Hi, Mayor, this is Mia Hernandez, and then we have Marley Porter as well. Could I be made a host, so I can screen share?
Sure, I will get somebody to do that for us. Make me a presenter. You are now a presenter, Mia.
Okay, perfect. All right, okay. So, good afternoon, city council members. Thank you, Roy and Mayor, for the introduction. Like the mayor has said, we are here to discuss the PDD amendment for the Peninsula located at nineteen hundred American Drive. So my name is Mia, like I said previously, I'm an engineer on the project. I'm here on behalf of Bowman, who is a civil engineer for this project, and we also have Marley Porter on my right for Living Architecture. He is the architect on the project. And firstly, I would like to mention that this property has extensive history in Lago Vista. The site's original PDD was created in two thousand and seven, amended in two thousand and eight, and even has an approved site plan from two thousand and eight, but after the economic downfall, construction efforts on the site were halted. Bowman, previously known as Loomis Partners and Living Architecture, were both the original engineer and architect on this project back in two thousand and seven. So now with a new developer involved, we are ready to put a final site on this project. So speaking of the development team, let's meet them. There are two developers involved in this project. They are also on the call today. We have SG Blocks and Glacier Global Partners. SG Blocks is the leading manufacturer in fabricating modules for construction of buildings, and Glacier Global Partners is an experienced commercial real estate investment firm. So let's take a deeper look at this site by looking at the survey. I want to be clear that this is different in what's on Travis County CAD and what city staff has provided in your packets. This is because the site has not been plotted before. The final plat boundaries of the site are intended to be the red line, and you will see that the survey shows no encroachments of the surrounding docks onto the site. I understand that there were community members that were concerned about their property boundaries and the boat docks, and we want to make it clear that there are no encroachments, and the final plat boundary is in red. So next, we will see an aerial overview of the site. As you can see, the boundary is in red again. The site is located at the southern end of American Drive on the south side of Lago Vista. The closest intersection near the site is American Drive and Highland Lake Drive, and you can see the Cove is located just east of the site. Next is our intention and goals on this development are to lower density, reduce the number of buildings, units, boats, and overall square footage of the project. Our goal is to minimize the impact on the trees and the shoreline. We intend to bring the buildings out of the floodplain and the parking out of the floodplain, and propose a less invasive location of amenities by moving the pool and volleyball court to the south side of the development, which will, which will provide less disruption to both the surrounding neighbors. Our desire is to remove the commercial uses from the plans, minimize the building footprint, and minimize the proximity of the buildings to the surrounding Cove neighbors. We intend to greatly reduce the volume and schedule of the original plan proposed by proposing one hundred and fifty to one hundred and eighty units versus the two hundred and twenty-five units originally approved. So we are going to achieve these goals by recommending the following PDD changes. As you see here on the left, which is the currently approved PDD, D one and D three are the residential parcels. D two is where the currently approved clubhouse, restaurant, and bar are planned, were originally planned. Parcel A is the recreational parcel, which includes tennis courts, snack bars, and volleyball nets. Parcel B is the dry boat storage facility, which is approved for two hundred dry boat storage. Parcel C is the marina, which is currently approved for, I believe, nine hundred wet slips. And then parcel S is the Cove parcel, and then parcel E is the gardens and parking parcel. Okay, so now we're going to see the proposed PDD overlay and changes. So now, looking at the right, we can see the proposed PDD parcel outline. Parcel D has combined into one residential section and has increased in size because we moved the parcel with the buildings further inland to bring the buildings away from the shoreline. Parcel A has decreased in size because, since the amenities have moved into parcel D, and parcel B has changed locations to accommodate the natural topography. As you see here, the back of the building line, which is kind of where the green arrow points right here, the back of the building line is, has almost doubled in distance away from the six hundred and eighty-one contour line, which is this line right here, this line right here, and so six, two hundred and twenty-two versus seventy-five and one fifty-five. So here, on the next slide, we'll go to this one, and we see that the back of the building line directly correlates with the site plan. You can also see that topography behind the buildings is anywhere from a twenty-foot drop directly off of it, which is exactly our intention of moving out of the steep drop, minimize exposed concrete and extensive foundation work. The area in green is currently the proposed amenities and green space. And then we have some additional items that we would like for council to consider. So firstly is one hundred and fifty to one hundred and eighty units may be constructed on parcel D in the same building footprint that you see in front of you. The unit type and quantity cannot be defined until the final design process is completed in the future, and I believe Marley can speak more extensively to that.
Essentially, what we say that we're not going to change the building footprint, that is factual, that the buildings stay exactly the size that they are now, but some of the bedrooms, when we get our study back from the real estate community, some one bedrooms may be desired, in which case we would convert two bedrooms to one bedrooms, increasing the number of units, but not increasing the overall square footage, nor the footprint, nor the impervious cover.
Yeah, so this would allow flexibility to have smaller units, as Marley has emphasized. So additionally, item two, final design has not occurred yet, therefore each floor is subject to change by roughly a foot in elevation. You'll be seeing the elevations later in the presentation, and Marley will be reviewing those, but we would like to ask to bring the total elevation to seven hundred and ninety-three feet versus what's in your packets, which is seven hundred and eighty-eight feet. So as of this time, due to the long process of design and approvals, the developer will not continue with the new PDD if it is not approved with the additional items one and two that are listed above. Therefore, the developer will revert to the existing PDD and will design to the previously approved parameters as entitled with two hundred and twenty-five units and the original PDD overlay as we outlined in the last slide. So now, I would like to welcome Marley Porter to discuss the architectural aspects of this project.
It's good to see all of you again. I think I've met some of you before in the Veterans Memorial Park. I'd like to introduce one person that wasn't talked about, and I don't see her up there, but she's always here. This is my wife behind me, Margarita, and they say behind every good man is a good woman rolling her eyes. And Margarita definitely does that. We have a, a video presentation that I'd like to show next, so let's go ahead and shift to that, Mia.
Okay. Yeah. Here we go. Let me know if you can hear audio.
Mayor, can you hear it all right? Can everybody?
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. I might point out, as this is going, that the trees that you see here in the bushes are actually taken from the aerial photograph, so we feel pretty confident this is an accurate rendering of the existing foliage. There's a parking structure in the center. All of the parking is in the center. So different from the previous design, all of the parking is invisible from the water, Cove, and surrounding residents. There is plant in this center core, an earth-integrated parking structure, two stories, one story below, one story above. The architecture is proposed as a symbol, building, these are representation, all of the four. Our goal is to have indigenous colors and materials, stone, stuff, and wood. The proposal is five, five-story towers with thirty units each. The proposal is five, five-story towers with 30 units each. Or, you can worry about bedrooms as well. This illustrates the three-story, athletic center, and the candy deck, and rooftop decks. This is a view from the cove area going around the building. Sorry for the jerky camera. That boat right there on the left is Jim A. Walt's boat. Okay, thank you. Next tip. The architecture again is proposed. There's a sketch here of the volleyball court, which I understand from when we met with the homeowners, used to be a volleyball court. So I thought it was a nice place to put one. And the buildings are much, much smaller and simple. Again, the materials we propose are stucco, wood, stone, and steel. And the final expressions, of course, have not been shown. We're showing the location of the pool and the negative edge looking out over the water. And you can see the parking structure that is only one story high and one story below grade. This is the proposed block elevation. It's a mass study. It is not an architectural study. But we're showing at this point 10-foot floor-to-floor. And as Mia mentioned, that may need to flex a little bit. We're suggesting no more than a foot. And we're using what's a CRT system that allows the slabs or the separation between floors that are wood to only be six inches in depth. It's a very innovative system built from our native resource, our only real renewable resource trees, fast-growth timber. And as you can see here, the height of 50 feet plus some roof deck activity that we have considered reducing or removing. These vignettes are pieces of the 3D model that simply demonstrate the masting and the location of the different items. And these studies here, the existing plan, that which is entitled is down below. And on the right, you can see the, where the two tennis courts are and the pool. On the left, you can see where the originally approved four-story buildings over two stories of parking come extremely far to the left of the view. You can see that red arrow points from where this photograph was taken. The buildings are exactly the height, the trees are exactly the height. And then in the proposed plan up above, you can see that on the left, the whole desire was to push the buildings closer together, open the space in between, and push them as far away from the left as possible to leave more of the mountain beyond the lake, beyond the water visible. Okay, same here. The amenities on the left have been reduced to two stories plus a clear story, if you will, that you see through. And one thing I wanted to point out is even though in the bottom model of the existing approved plan, the buildings look separate, on each floor is a 50-foot wide platform that connects to the elevators and stairs. So it's really more of a solid-looking block. Next. This is a copy of the original site plan. You can see the dotted line represents the water quality zone. The buildings were 130 feet wide, about 150 feet long. There were six of them proposed with a total of 200, how many?
225.
225 condominiums. You can see the bridges in between that connect the architecture. There was even, in fact, proposed arches in the middle. Originally, this was again, two stories on the north side over two to three stories of parking, depending on the building. The public restaurant was out at the point. The dry boat storage was located right in our biggest grove of heritage jokes. And 50% of the buildings face the water, and 50% of the buildings faced the interior area. The proposed site plan, as you can see, superimposed, pulls all the buildings in, drops one building. It does propose to increase the height of buildings E and D that you see on the right. But the buildings A, B, and C will be expressed here shortly as the same height as the original. The amenities have majorly been pulled to the south side, where you can see the volleyball spa, pool, poolhouse workout. The RV and boat storage is for how many spaces? 27?
20.
20. So it's very small in comparison to 200 public's storage units. And the boat ramp is modified such that it doesn't hurt our heritage jokes and goes on down to the proposed marina. Next. This is a very telling slide here. On the left-hand side are the south buildings that were slated as four stories, but over two stories of parking. All of the parking was in the floodplain, which is allowed, but not very good for the cars. And you can see that the height of our proposed building is the same, if not a little lower, because of the 612 pitch on these, on the previous buildings. On the right, you can see the building is indeed taller, but there are only two of them. And the real key is that we've made them now about a football field apart instead of two football fields apart. And that gets the development further away from the shore. We've labeled the stories here as in 10 feet each. So you can see that below the finished floor, which is level three on the left, there are actually three stories of visible parking below. The suggested new development is five stories with some possible shade structures above, or at least mechanical parapet. So the mechanical units are not visible from anywhere. This slides on over to the other side. You can see a little bit of base or foundation that comes out of the ground. This is indeed the worst case. It's about 12 feet that comes out of the ground on one corner versus about 84 feet that came out of the ground before. And we discussed this morning that the architect would like to cover that in the native Austin limestone. This three-dimensional perspective shows in red what is permitted, what is entitled. Including up to the right-hand corner are the tennis courts and pool. Then the three buildings and how far the middle building comes around to the point, the public restaurant, and the amenity center. And then the three blocks to the, to the south. And then the blue represents what we're proposing. To essentially wrap up my remarks, having been involved with this in 2005, 2006, 2007, and 2008, I am very grateful at the twilight of my career that I have a chance for penance, that this developer came to me and wanted to do something substantially different. He wanted to reduce the density and decrease the footprint. And very few developers ever tell me that. He wanted to get all the buildings out of the floodplain. We are entitled to 225 units versus 150 to 180 units. Again, depending on future studies. Again, the footprint will not modify. We were entitled to almost 600,000 square feet versus today just breaking 300,000 total building square feet. We had a 325,000-square-foot footprint. We're now 244,000 square feet, which is an incredible improvement on two things, on impervious cover and trees. We also master-planned, based on the previous developer, 700 cars because it was going to be a public area versus today 300 cars. We had planned 300 boats versus what we planned today of 75 boats. There was over 20,000 square feet visible from the cove, and today there is 16,000 square feet. And that square footage is slid as far as possible to the left or to the east. The previous development cut down, scoured 80% of the existing trees. This plan keeps 80% of the trees. We wanted to make more subtle the visual and noise impact. So 100% of the cars are visible only inside the courtyard, and the sound will be muted and mitigated by the buildings. And that's very important on water. There's only housing. This is a residential neighborhood. I heard the council members talking about the roads earlier. This is a residential development. We have no intention whatsoever of any commercial activity. It won't mean that people from the adjacent neighborhood can't come in and walk around the trails, but there will be no invitation to come to our patio decker tower or spa. The construction efficiency, listening to you all talk about the streets, which is so important in a community like yours that has grown up much like Paris, France did, around the little trails that were here originally when this was just a light lake community. This development that we're proposing saves over 20,000 cubic yards of excavation, which translates to 1,350 heavy trucks. We save 2,000 cubic yards of fill, which is 135 heavy trucks. We eliminate 4,600 cubic yards of concrete that was going to be used for the underground parking structures in the floodplain, which is 460 cement trucks. I think equally critical to the impact to the local area during construction. And we do have an agreement, are an agreement, that any damage we do to any street will be repaired immediately to city specifications. But we're only talking, we're talking about two years max of construction time, saving at least one year from the entitled development. What we're truly, what we're talking about here is true sustainability and not just we're saving the trees and not just that we're going to have spray foam insulation and prefabricated construction methodologies. True sustainability is, will it remain a community over the decades? And as a planner and architect, I believe that this plan far exceeds the previous one. And I, for one, would not really like to go back to that one. What are the community benefits? There's going to be a lot of need for local workers, carpenters, sheetrockers, painters, plumbers, electricians, everybody that's in the trade, which is a good portion of your community and my community in Marble Falls. And with that, I'll rest my remarks and take any questions.
All right. Thank you. I guess I will start it off with the questions. So I'm going to ask the most obvious one to everybody here in the audience. The original height was at 555 for the buildings on the cove side. Now it says something 776, but if you add the structures on the roof, it's at 788, possibly as high as 793 with your requested changes. Is there, I mean, do these buildings on that cove side have to be the same site height as the riverside? Could they be four stories or even three stories? I was kind of doing some math. If we dropped it from five to three on the cove side, that would drop your rooms down from 150 to 180 to about 125 to 155. I'm just curious, is that, is, does it have to be the same? Is there, is there not a possibility? It doesn't get approved, you go back, you go back to the old one. You're going to have to do it at 755. You know, I kind of like the layout and the design of the new, the new proposal. I just wondered if there's a a median in there somewhere in between on the height of those two buildings.
Okay, Mayor, and council, we've been working on the design modifications for about four months now. And the developer has put forth quite a bit of money to have that happen, including, we're in the middle of a traffic study, as I understand it. And these are the facts about the type of construction. Five stories is what's permissible by current code out of wood. It is true that we could do five stories over a concrete pediment of a story or two so that we keep the overall yield the same to get the dollars to work, to make it interesting for the developer. But the fact remains that that cost goes so far over on adding a floor or two to the buildings on the south, that subtracting a floor or two from the buildings on the north is impractical. We've also done studies that I think some people have seen that shows if we lower the buildings on the north to the cove, the floor or two, and we add those floors to the buildings in the back, it becomes more of a visual barrier and actually covers up more of the mountain and more of the sky. Because when something goes down and something goes up and the line of sight is made straight across the cove, in our opinion, my opinion as an architect, it's actually a worse view. The real key to us was to get the buildings, the taller buildings as far away from the promontory point of the peninsula back into the cove where there's very seldom much water, to lower our amenity building and put all of the noise generators to the south side where there's already boat traffic and noise. So in short, to answer your question, it simply is not economically feasible. And in an aesthetic sense, I think it's a worse design than this. And I'm a born and bred tree hugger, and I was really tickled that we got to save what's going to soften the building's edge. And again, the trees are going to cover up any foundation out of the, out of the ground. But we're only 12 feet versus two and a half stories of parking. And we're not going to be looking at people's headlights coming at the parking spaces at night.
All right. And you actually addressed my, my next question because I was going to ask, you know, from the cove side, if you drop that, those two buildings down, does that really help? Or, I mean, I know if you're sitting on the cove side, you're not seeing, I guess the trees in front of it would cover a greater percentage of it. But when you're trying to, if you're still trying to look out over the river, you know, on that north side, I guess, you're still, at one point, you'd still be looking at the five-story buildings on the opposite side of the design.
Yeah, the fact, the fact is, and this is just pure geometry, the site as it stands naked, you can't see over the hump of it, the middle, to the water on the other side. A two-story building or a three-story building or a four-story building will cover up no more than it's covered up now. It does take out some sky view. But again, by shifting the buildings to the left, to the east, we open up a huge extent of the mountain view and sunset. So again, geometrically speaking, I just can't buy into the idea that the, I know five stories sounds bad because it's higher, but in the long shot, I think it is a softer approach to fix the bigness of what's entitled.
And Mayor, you are exactly correct. We've done renderings, Marley's done renderings.
And Mayor, you are exactly correct. We've done renderings, Marley's done renderings where if you lower the, the cove side of the buildings and maybe you'll, no matter what, even if you keep the south side buildings at five stories, you'll, you'll see straight through to the south side buildings, regardless of their height, if six stories or five stories or.
But then the yield doesn't work because the developers already dropped from 225 to 150, which is again, I can't even get my head around it sometimes. Most developers are like, more, 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 more. And this developer goes, no, 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 no.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I know we've had, I know we've had cases in some of our variance request for the height variances and stuff that's come before committees. Where, you know, I, I guess it's shown that if a an 18-story building blocks your view, I mean, an 18-foot or 20-foot building blocks your view, then a or if it already blocked your view, then a 22 or 24 building is not going to, is not really changing it because your view's already blocked. So if the, if the five-story buildings on the south side are going to block any view of the mountains or hills on the other side of the lake, then you know, dropping those buildings on the north side, I don't know that that's not really, it's not really going to open up the view at all. It might hide a greater percentage of those buildings on that north side, but I was just wondering if it would change the view at all.
Mayor, I have a point of privilege question, if you will. This is Mr. Prince.
Yes.
I'm struggling with the, the presentation that they're having, I think is just absorbing so much bandwidth. I'm wondering if we can turn that off. It'll be much easier to participate in the conversation. Thank you.
Yep, okay.
That help?
Much, yeah.
All right. So at the moment, that's all I have, at least for the presenter. So I'll turn this over to other members of council and I see Councilor Sullivan's hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little bit confused and I was hoping to try and clear up that confusion. So you threw out a bunch of numbers as far as heights are concerned and, and you know, where you can have heights and so forth. I don't, this, I can't remember who it was that showed the picture, but it, it showed the building numbers D1, D2, D3 from the currently approved PDD. And I didn't realize D1 is there along the cove side. And, and if you look at the approved 2008 PDD, it says very clearly that the higher height, the 776 is allowed for the D1 building. And it's the D2, D3 buildings that are limited to 755. So I'm, but that's the opposite of what a lot of the, the opponents of this are saying. So I was hoping Roy or someone could jump in.
I, I can, I can clear that up. I believe that was a numbering mistake that we had brought up at P and Z. And so we had, we had to keep the original because P and Z saw it, but thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Sullivan, because D2 and, no, D1 and D3 are supposed to be flipped. So yeah, the cove side was the originally lower proposed height and then the higher was on the south side. And that's my apologies.
So, so the diagram that we saw that showed D1 on the cove side was inaccurate. D1 is over on the, the riverside.
It's a numbering mistake and I had to keep it in there. So if you heard anything from P and Z that it would, it wouldn't change and that we could clear it up again in this meeting.
Okay, okay. Very good. And then the, the other question I had, Mayor, is that I, I think we've, I, I've been told that anything that is different that's being presented to us versus what was presented to P and Z, we can't move forward with that. And, and, and I thought that at least in the, the ordinance that's been presented to us, it says 150 units. There, this is now saying, you know, 150 to 180. And then same thing with the height, it was 783 or whatever, 789, whatever. And now it's 793. Can we even address this without it going back to P and Z? I guess is my question. Again, maybe Roy or Aaron can comment on that.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let Aaron clear it up. I could have some thoughts, but I'll let Aaron say it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, if there are proposed changes to the plan that have not been reviewed, that are different from what P and Z saw, then it needs to go back to P and Z. You can only approve, now, you can only approve something that P and Z saw and used as the basis for their recommendation. That being said, if you don't agree with everything P and Z approved or recommended to you, you can request additional adjustments, assuming the applicant agrees. So, you know, if you want to move forward with this tonight, if the applicant has not made any substantial changes that have not been seen by P and Z, then you could consider it. And as Roy mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, based on the analysis of the properties at, the ownership of properties for, I believe it's those identified as 17, 18 and 21, 18, 19 and 21. It has exceeded that 20% threshold, which would require a three-fourths vote to approve, so.
So let me, if I could, just follow up with a couple of quick questions. The, the 150 to 180 units, to me, I don't know that that's significant. And the only, I see someone, Julie's putting up that it is significant. The only reason why I'm asking, is it not significant? Is it because, because they're not changing the footprint? They're, they're taking two, two bedroom units and making them one and, and the footprint is remaining the same. So would that not rise to the level of a significant change or would it?
So I want Roy to weigh in on how this plays out because typically something in their design that would impact their, the number of units approved, if that's different from what P and Z saw, this would need to go back to P and Z. But I need him to clarify based on what's in the application before you compared to what P and Z saw.
Well, and if I may piggyback on that, you know, they, one of the changes that they are proposed to us was increase into 793 over to 788. Did, did P and Z even consider the 793 or? Or, because that seems different that maybe, you know, P and Z needs to consider it if they didn't.
So Roy, could you comment on both of those?
Yeah, P and Z saw the marked up red old ordinance that doesn't necessarily match the design drawings that were presented as the basis of their recommendation. So that they were aware that, I think there might've even been an even higher number than that at one point contemplated. Nonetheless, their recommendation was based on the drawings. Now, you know, obviously you guys can, can, you know, approve an ordinance notwithstanding a recommendation from P and Z or modify your approval from what's done from P and Z. You know, once again, that you're, you're doing so without their input. But I guess my point being, they looked at these buildings. Okay. You know, that if, if the footprint doesn't change and the change is, you know, let me put it this way. They added a foot based on what was discussed from what was drawn at P and Z, you know, just for construction tolerance, if you will. And, and in many ways, that's what they're, they're kind of justifying now. Only now it's not construction tolerance, it's design tolerance. Once again, is it substantially different from P and Z? You know, that's your call. You know, but, but you know, once again, I think you have the legal authority to proceed notwithstanding their recommendation. But you have to understand, you should do so knowing what they thought about and considered.
Yeah.
And there were larger heights and numbers in their markup. Those were in front of them.
Got it. And I did see that, but I guess my question is, is that the ordinance that has come before us tonight shows 150 condos and 788 as the feet. So to me, that is reflective of what P and Z approved.
That was their recommendation. That is correct. And that was, that was based on an alternative that was identified in the staff report with one foot added to the height.
Okay. And I'll just say, in, in my opinion, I don't find the change to 150 to 180 significant because the footprint's not changing. But I do find the height difference a significant change. And that's just my opinion. And I will yield the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Thank you. Council Prince.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to kind of double clarify, Mr. Sullivan asked the question about, about a height. And there was this D1, D2, D3. I, I kind of want to simplify my question. So if I understand it right, and Mr. Janboor, help me if I go wrong here. There were some area, but the, the by right under the existing PDD, there are some areas which can be built to 755. There are other areas which can be built to 776. That's what I, I believe I understand. And, and the, the, what P and Z approved, as Mr. Sullivan just pointed out, was to 788. That would be in some areas, an increase of 12 feet, in other areas, an increase of 23 feet. And so, so that's actually what P and Z approved was those two increases. Is it, have I got my numbers right there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then of course, we've got this, this incremental 788 to 793, which would be an additional five feet on top of that. So the, and I'll just say this, Ms. Wolf, I think, and Mayor, I, I appreciate you holding the signs up, but that's pretty distracting. I think it's, it's kind of against our rules of procedure to be holding signs up during the meeting. So you'll have your chance for comments, I, I know, but the, but the signs are a little distracting for me. So that's the, the bottom line. There, there's already a fairly significant increase in, in height in what P and Z approved, independent of this additional request tonight. And then in terms of floors, it's going from four to five. And in terms of units, it's going down. So that's, that, I just want to make sure I understand those numbers to, because to me, those are the most important things. I applaud the design efforts to save trees and make things more aesthetically pleasing and move things around. But I'm, I'm with Mr. Sullivan that I think, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not seeing the motivation from a city and from our perspective of representing our citizens, I'm not seeing the motivation to increase the height beyond what's already there in the, in the by right portions.
All right. Thank you. And since you, since you pointed that out, I will go back here and I'll just, I'm going to read on our rules of procedure, number seven, no placards, banners or signs may be displayed in council chambers or city hall. I know we're not in person, but holding them up to the screen is basically the same thing. It's very distracting for people. So please, no signs or banners. Anyone else? Council? Yes, Council Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually had a couple of clarifying questions for the applicant. The first question I have has to do with the slide that highlights community benefits. And I was wondering if they could provide us with some examples as to what they have identified as community benefits? Because I think I heard in the presentation and read in the packet, really they've kind of removed all of the community benefits, all of the commercial opportunities and, and even stated that the, the citizens would no longer be invited to use the spa and things like that. So I'm wondering if they can highlight what those community benefits are. And then I also have a question about lighting. So we have a dark skies ordinance here in Lago Vista and I was wondering if you could talk to us a little bit about your lighting and whether or not you intend to ensure that all lighting at the property is, is compliant with dark skies.
Okay, thank you. Both very good questions and I'll answer them in reverse order. I was on city council in Cottonwood Shores when we personally pushed and we adopted the night sky, dark sky ordinance and we would most definitely design and build this building with the dark sky ordinance in place and hopefully stand as an example how a development can do so and keep the skies dark and the stars visible. That's very important to me and the developer, the entire team. As far as benefits to the community goes, when it was slated by the previous developer to invite the public and have yet another restaurant that most probably would fail or dry bulk storage, which was a profit center for the developer, this developer has instead decided that this should be a residential community and the ad valorem value of 150 to 180 units is indeed a benefit to the community, as are the residents shopping and all the grocery stores and the gas stations and the local residents, contractors and subcontractors working on the project. So it's no different than is a house, another house good for Lago Vista? The answer is irrevocably yes. Does it need to be public access to be good for the community? I don't believe so. I believe that it needs to be a top quality residential neighborhood that invites good neighbors doing good things for the built environment and for the local community. I, I think that answers those two questions. I'd also like to just state again that the difference between 115 and 180 units will not be expressed in square footage, nor number of parking spaces, nor footprint. Those are set. But if our marketing study comes back and says X amount of one bedrooms is desirable, the developer, in my opinion, should be able to put those in there if he doesn't have to put in any more parking, which he does not by code. If he doesn't change the building footprint and the impervious cover, which he doesn't plan to do, the number of units makes no difference whatsoever in the impact of the development on the community, the roads and the environment.
All right, thank you. Yes, Council Marion.
Sorry, Mayor, I apologize. I had another question. So I, I've seen the packet that they are, that the developer is planning on 325 parking spaces. For 150 units, I think that, you know, could, could be adequate. For 180 units, I'm not so sure. So the question I have related to that is what is the plan for overflow parking? Often, you know, a place that you purchase, whether it's a one bedroom, two bedroom, whatever, often comes with, that we say, two cars minimum. That would be at 180, 360. And I'm wondering, what is the, are there other parking spaces besides the parking garage that could be made use of there on the property? Or are we going to end up with cars lining American Drive? If there's not room in the parking garage?
I truly don't believe that will happen. I believe we've adequately parked, if not overly parked. We even put in some tandem spaces because families that have two cars, some doubt, some do. But most one bedrooms are required only one parking space per unit, not two. And most one bedrooms have but one car. So if we end up with 20 or 31 bedrooms, it does not increase the parking load at all.
I'm not quite sure that answered, answered the question though. Like what is, what is the, the plan B in case that does in fact happen? Is there extra parking on site? Or if there aren't enough parking spaces, are we now talking about cars lining American Drive or somewhere outside of the?
I don't think the developer would like to see cars on American Drive any, any more than anybody else would. I do need to point out, and I have not verified this with the developer, so he'll probably slap me tomorrow. But they own 22 acres adjacent to this, but the last thing I would like to see developed on that is more concrete for more cars. When we're trying to lower the number of our trips and lower the impact of our cars on our environment. That may not be the question you're looking for, ma'am, but I believe it's the best answer.
And I would like to add to Marley's statement saying that we plan for the buffer in a sense of there's a little bit of wiggle room with the 225 from the original kind of 150 in the unit mix that we have proposed. So we believe that there's good enough buffer that in case we go to the 100 units that are smaller, that it'll be accounted for and there won't be any need for additional parking.
All right. And Council Prince, I see your hand up and I was even going to ask you, did you get your questions answered a while ago? Because we went straight to Council Marion and I didn't know if you got your.
Yeah, I think I got my questions answered on the, on the height, although I think I, I, I failed the fourth grade math test in my subtraction. There's an area where it would be an increase of 33 feet. fourth grade math test in my subtraction. There's an area where it would be an increase of thirty-three feet. I actually said twenty-three, I think. But I have a question, and that's why I was raising my hand. I'm wondering if the development team looked at. And again, I'll say, you know, I like the improvements in the layout and the 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 scheme of the way things are done and saving trees and all that. Did the team look at what it what it would take to do, or could you, how you would put in one hundred and fifty or even one hundred and eighty units with the existing by right height? Is that something that you looked at at all?
Yes, we examined townhouses, three stories, four stories. We examined a scheme that I absolutely detested almost as much as the previously approved one, was one solid building, five stories high on the on the south side. Hideous, but got the density, but absolutely killed him his sunset.
And trees.
And trees and killed a lot of trees. On the north side, south side, we have a lot more trees than the north side. The developer has agreed as opposed to be put into a development agreement or stated in tonight's statement from the City Council, should you go forward with the vote, that we'll be adding a whole bunch of mature indigenous healthy trees to the north side. We envision that as a park side. We've agreed to put up a fence that cannot be crossed even when the water's down, and we have to come up with a nice engineering solution that people, when the water's up, don't run over the fence that keeps people from walking around it. The Cove people were very astute in saying that they really don't want this neighborhood, our proposed neighborhood, walking to their neighborhood, and that's totally understandable. But the idea of placing more trees, and the trees that are existing, ladies and gentlemen, are not twenty-foot trees. These are forty-five to sixty-five foot tall existing heritage oaks and post oaks, red oaks. And they're they're incredibly beautiful screen, and we don't want to take any but the exact exact minimum that we can. And the only ones we're taking out is on the interior where we've put the building, where, thank God, most of the trees aren't.
All right. Anybody else on council? And I have one more question, and I don't know if this is for the applicant or if this is for staff. But in reference to American Drive, I know the applicant said that, you know, any repairs, the streets and stuff would be would be made, any repairs would be made. But looking at the red line version that was in the pack, it showed that any improvements that were required to American Drive would not be done. Does American Drive, is it not going to need any kind of improvements? And if it is, why was this taken out?
We suggested language changes for any improvements recommended by the traffic impact analysis. They're called warrants. So basically warrants or anything from a stop sign, a right turn lane, a traffic signal, any warrants made by the TIA to be made by the developer, instead of what was originally in the PDD, which was improve the entirety of American Ford, resurface it, do ribbon curb. We just wanted to do what was necessary from the traffic that was found in the TIA.
And that's on bill board. I'm sorry, Roy.
That that language is in fact in the proposed new ordinance.
Oh, okay. And that TIA is ongoing?
Yes, sir.
All right, council, anybody else?
Darcy has her hand up.
She's not on council.
Oh, you haven't gone to the audience yet. She was on council. Because, let's see. All right, there's nobody from council. I will go to the audience. But I have several people that actually signed up to speak. So before I get to Darcy, Darcy, you're just going to have to wait because I don't have a sign up sheet from you. See what I have here. I have Mr. George Carr, I believe, has signed up to speak. Is that correct, Mr. Carr? Is Mr. Carr with us? No, I guess so.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, he unmuted. Okay.
I thought maybe you had unmuted. But anyway, yeah, I'm ready to talk. Could you could you possibly make me a presenter so I could show some slides?
I don't believe that's possible. Is that possible? I mean, I got you got three minutes.
Yep. And I and I can go through these in four minutes and twenty-eight seconds as fast as possible. But honestly, I'm so impressed that you guys have listened and and asked the critical questions. And I mean, I I've made my point is that the present. Anyway, let me just go ahead. I'll make my presentation.
Hang on, Mr. Hang on just a second, Mr. Carr. Let me go to my emails. Make sure I got the right. Let's see. Let me see if I got the right one. The comments. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, there's a attachment in the email I sent you.
Okay. Let's see if I got this here. All right. Can you make me a presenter? Please, and then I'll share it.
You're awesome. What a tech. What a tech master.
Oh, well, now Dave says. Okay, I've been made a prevent. All right, I'm a preventer, presenter, preventer. Share. All right. Does that help?
That's awesome. Well, my name's George Carr, and I've lived in the Cove for twenty-seven years or owned property and lived in the Cove. Can you go to the next slide, page down?
Yeah, I'm trying.
Yeah, okay. Well, first, I want to thank the developer for talking to us and working with us. They've been absolutely fantastic. And as as you pointed out, the proposed plan has many improvements over the existing plan. It would be a crying shame to go back to the existing plan. But as you raised the point, it there's just one overriding unacceptable flaw, and that's that the buildings on our side go from twenty-six feet tall to more than sixty-four feet tall. And, you know, all these heights and numbers, but and the the number is not like it's two stories to five stories. It's not three or four stories to five stories. It's two stories, five stories. And the developer and the development services insist on describing this whole thing as an eleven-foot increase, but that's not true. And I'm afraid that the height is going to end up making another eyesore kind of like the island. And you can see behind the houses behind that structure are, you know, the lowest price. There's a bunch of empty lots because nobody wants to live behind this monstrous eyesore. The presentation to the P and Z by the developer and the PDD document itself was pretty misleading and excluded a lot of details. The height issue was raised by everyone, you know, in every letter that was sent to the P and Z, but it was completely ignored. And if the building on the Cove side were two or three, or I would even say if it was one story lower, give us some kind of, you know, throw us a nut or something. We'd be here in support of the proposed plan. I love the plan. I love what they've done. But I just can't, you know, imagine having these monstrous five-story buildings in such proximity to residential real estate. Okay, can we go on then? Next slide. I mean, this this is the plan. D one was on the lakeside, and it was and and it's approved to seven seventy-six, and the ones on the Cove side are approved at seven seventy-five. Go ahead to the next. So the PDD was was very misleading. It only ever mentions the eleven-foot increase. It never says anything about the thirty-three-foot increase on the Cove side. Go to the next page. And this is what was presented to the P and Z. You can hardly read what the existing numbers were. There's eight hundred with arrows and arrows all over and five and this and that. I mean, it's, you know, it was it was very confusing. Go ahead to the next one. And as someone pointed out, you know, the the pictures have been reversed for whatever reason. But coincidentally, it makes it look like the D one is approved to seven seventy-six on the Cove side, when in fact, everything on the Cove side is only to seven fifty-five. So go to the next. The renderings that they've done show the existing plan. You can see they're just about one floor lower than the, you know, the new buildings that they're proposing. But the fact is, they're three stories lower. They're thirty-three feet lower. And I don't know about pitch of the roof and all that stuff. The maximum's seven fifty-five, and that's the maximum, you know? It's not like you go to seven fifty-five and add the roof. It has to be seven fifty-five. So anyway, I mean, it's just misleading. Go to the next one. Even the even the renderings, well, I don't know. I mean, it looked like what Marley presented might have been actually revised from what they sent to me. But if you look at this, you know, the existing plan's only very slightly lower than the proposed plan, when the reality is it's significantly lower. Go to the next slide. I, you know, all I so anyway, the proposed development more than doubles the maximum height of the buildings along the Cove side from twenty-six to more than sixty-four. Both the developer and development service insist on describing the proposed development as an eleven-foot increase, but that's false. The project would be ideal if the Cove side buildings were just slightly reduced in height. No resident adjacent to the project is in favor of proceeding as it is. The developer will say it has to be one hundred and fifty units. The previous developer said it absolutely had to be two hundred and twenty-five. I mean, removing two Cove side floors eliminates twenty-four units. As somebody did the math, one floor would be twelve units. You know, Marley says removing those floors makes no difference. But if you look at our houses, they're much lower than what than than the base of those buildings. So when you lower them two floors, we're not going to see a thing about the far floors. Add two more floors on to the lakeside building. It's not going to make one iota of difference. If they could take one or two floors off the two buildings on our side and put one or two floors on the lakeside, we would love that. We would. That would be ideal. I will be, you know, I would be cheering for this project. There there has to be a way. They say there's the only way to do it, but I think there's different options that we need to find a better one. You guys are protecting our interests. I realize you're protecting everyone in Lago Vista's interest. I don't think having a huge eyesore on our side of this is in anyone's interest. And, you know, I'm saying send the PDD back, but but, you know, I really like this plan much better, and I would just love to find a way to make our side lower. I don't know. And we'd love to work with you guys and the developer and come up with a plan that makes everybody happy and is really good for Lago and us.
All right. We're about seven minutes now, George, so I'm.
Okay, well, that's good. The last one is just a. Anyway, that's fine. Thank you so much. And I I really commend you guys and appreciate your reading this information and asking the hard questions and trying to, you know, make it right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. I'm going to have to ask somebody on staff. How do I get out of this now? Do I hit the collapse button?
There's a picture of a screen at the bottom of your thing. You just press that one. See where it says screen with a line through it at the bottom of your computer?
No.
Move your mouse. Well, anyway, it's there. There you go.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Reattach cameras. I don't know. All right. So is the presentation gone for everybody? Okay, thank you. Thank you for helping me. All right. Let's see, next. Let's see. Who I have here? John Yates? Did you sign up to speak? Was John Yates on here?
I have to speak, Mr. Tidwell.
Yes.
I sent you a letter. I'm I'm happy to speak, and I'm I'm concerned about the height of the buildings across the board. And I'm also real concerned about the traffic on Highland Drive. Our fence has been hit four times over the years. If you come down Highland Drive, that's a tight turn. Four times when the old hotel and bar was there, our fence got hit four times by cars. Luckily, we were able to catch the people that, quite honestly, my thought would be is to push all the traffic on Boggy Ford and enhance American Drive where it could handle all the traffic, put a speed bump that right after the Cove between us and the place. But we got road problems. You're going to put ten percent of your population of Lago on twelve acres of land. I'm concerned about infrastructure, all the road, because the road between Highland and and the place there, it's really not a road. It's a parking lot. In fact, the church people use it all. So let me say, that's my concern is I I'm concerned that the city's going to spend a lot of money adding infrastructure for all the density where where they're adding it right there. But thank you for letting me speak.
All right. Thank you. I I just have a question, you know. Maybe some clarification. I don't know. When I do the math, the census has is that two point three people per household, one hundred and eighty, that's roughly four hundred people. We have ten thousand in the city. So I don't know that four hundred is ten percent of ten thousand, but I understand what you're saying. Next, I have Kiyosaki. I don't know if it's Jill or Rich. Which one of you who signed up?
Rich, here I am.
All right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and everybody. All the you, everyone's addressed all the things that the people in the Cove. I live in the Cove, been here for thirty years. I have a question. Yes, I'm concerned about the height. Let me just quick show a sign and ask the people here. So this is one of the slides they just presented showing the old and the new buildings about the same height.
Yeah, no signs, please.
Okay, well, then you're going to have. And then they showed the sign. It wasn't really a sign. It's their presentation. So I have a question about their presentations, and you just had it up there, the pink and the red buildings. Even though the sketch of the two buildings side by side are about the same height, yet they show the the blue buildings, which is the new ones, definitely one story higher. So their sketch, one of those sketches is wrong for the architectural people, and I don't know which one. So that's a concern of obviously, yes, I'm concerned about the height. I think the changes, many of the changes they made are wonderful. There's less concrete. We see less concrete because they don't have those two floors of garages down below. It is a smaller footprint. And so I'm in favor of everything, but just one thing I'd like to point out is that extra roof on the top, you're not going to have many people sunning up there because it's extremely hot here in Texas, as we all know, and the Texas people know. Sitting on top of the roof without a pool there to cool off, so why even have that roof deck up there? What you what you're you, you're adding fifteen feet or so to the height. You just cut that off, that would help some of it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Go to my emails here. Wolf, Julie Wolf. Julie Wolf, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
You can hear me. Okay, great. Thank you for sorry for the signs. I was just trying to. I I tend to have a lot of emotion around this. This is my home, and I've lived here for over twenty years. So I just wanted to say first that I did send the letter and all the city council. So I just wanted to say first that I did send the letter in, all the city council got it, the mayor got it. Um, and so I want to reiterate that I do want to request that the city council deny the current PDD, particularly with the new data that came in today, increasing the density to a hundred and eighty units and the height up to seven ninety-three. So I, I, I'm against the height of seven eighty-eight in the Cove. Um, and the real thing about that, when you go to seven eighty-eight, is the fact, uh, my letter states there would be three five-story buildings. I have researched again, since I, I had so many copies of different PDDs, there would be two five-story buildings, each housing thirty units and now perhaps housing thirty-six units. At a minimum, that's sixty units. They're staring down in my backyard. What would you think of sixty housing units at seven hundred and eighty feet staring down in your backyard? I mean, that, that's just not what anybody wants. Right? Um, we moved to Lago Vista in nineteen ninety-nine. We did a lot of research around the lake. We have a lot of areas in the lake that have no planning and zoning. You can look at Briar Cliff, you can look at Spice Wood, you can look at Valente. They have no P and Z. So we specifically chose Lago Vista because they had planning and zoning. And it was our, in, our understanding that zoning would protect residents from atrocities like this. So, um, I hope that, that you will, will consider that, the current residents, the current citizens, the people who have been here for over twenty years, um, when you make your decision tonight. We, um, we just had thought it would protect our investments. I know some people mentioned, um, that they didn't see an issue with additional units, if they didn't have to increase the height. But you need to also realize additional units are gonna put a strain on your roads and most importantly, your infrastructure of sewer. The sewer on this side of the city is not good. Come down Highland Lake Drive, check out the Cove lift station. There is a lift station somewhere around American. Check it out, I can't find it, but it just stinks. So, um, there is gonna be an impact on that. Uh, so I think those are my biggest things. Um, in my letter, I did give you some examples of LUEs and densities per acre. You guys can read that, I don't need to reiterate it. But I think it is the most dense that we have anywhere in Lago Vista, unless the island, but I don't think the island has that much, um, occupancy, I don't think it has that many LUEs. So, um, in summary, I'd like you to, um, either, I don't think you can table it because I think table it will not be considered in action and could perhaps invoke the thirty-day default approval. So I would like to see you, um, reject this PDD, send it back to planning and zoning, and let's get the information out to the public that the developer wants to bring to you before they bring it, before they bring it to you, right? So we were surprised today with the changes. The changes to seven ninety-three and the changes to potentially a hundred and eighty units. I don't think the public needs to be given surprises like that at a last minute at a P and Z meeting. Anyway, thank you so much for your time. And I apologize for the signs ahead of time, but I get a little emotional about this, so thank you very much.
Yep, no worries. Thank you. All right, that is all that I have received emails from, so, Darcy.
Hey, hey, you, you should have gotten an email from Gary Ladner. Did you not get an email from Gary Ladner? Gary and Linda Ladner, you should have. They, I believe they hand delivered.
You're right, I do. I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. I will mute again, sorry.
All right, so I'll go to Gary Ladner then. Sorry, Darcy.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is Gary Ladner. Are you hearing me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I represent myself and my wife Linda. We live at two oh six five three Highland Lake Loop, and that is in the Cove. And we're right behind the proposed peninsula project. Uh, we object in the highest order, the changes of the ordinance that is being presented, especially section six, four G and H, which is really asking for six stories because of the roof structure that they keep talking about. Five stories plus roof structure means six stories to us. And now they're saying seven hundred and ninety-three. Before it was seven hundred and eighty-eight. The, uh, maps that I'd seen previously showed each story to be ten foot. I think that was probably unrealistic. Now they're adding another foot to that to get up to seven ninety-three. Ten, ten foot per story is probably unviable and not a very, uh, nice condo. The former, former PDD, uh, four J and K had maximum height of seven seventy-six, and that was on the four stories on the main lakeside. And the side facing the Cove were seven fifty-five, and that was for two stories. And, uh, we agreed with that with, uh, several meetings with the previous builder, and, uh, he was fine with it. We didn't, uh, really agree to the whole, uh, PDD at the time, but we was happy to see that he did lower our side down to two stories and we would like to see it remain the same. Uh, keep in mind, there are no buildings in Lago Vista that even approached this kind of obstruction of views and concentration. Obviously, the city has this as a possible tax increase. However, s- increase of services needed will also increase. As Julie mentioned, sir, we got water issues, you got road issues. Keep in mind, all residents of Cove and many residents on Highland Lake Drive, MacArthur, Bogey Ford, will all be looking down upon this thing. It's not just us. And I'm really surprised in talking to some of the neighbors, they don't even know this is going on. It's not been publicized. So there's neighbors close by that are gonna be involved, haven't even had a chance to voice their concern. So, bottom line, we propose that the mayor and the council reject this PDD, send it back, as Julie mentioned, to P and Z because of the changes. I think P and Z needs to reconsider their recommendation. They had two members absent when we, when we met. Those two members might have a totally different opinion on this whole thing. So I think it needs to be sent back to them, start from scratch and this, see if we can get this thing worked out with everybody in agreement. For the citizens that you represent, a higher good mean should come into play with your decision. Thank you for listening to myself and my wife. And maybe we can work this thing out.
All right. Thank you very much, Gary. All right. Darcy, we'll try again.
Mayor, city council members and city manager, I just had a few questions first. Um, when this went to planning and zoning meeting, it was the first-held meeting that was actually back into public at City Hall, which I think kind of threw off a lot of citizens because we were told that meetings would be a go-to meeting until September. And then, um, also in that factor, there's no YouTube video of this meeting up online, which all meetings that are held up at City Hall are supposed to be YouTube. So there's my first two things. And then, one of my, uh, one, I have a couple of questions. So one of my other things is, there's a, a thing in here that says zoning for garden area parcel parcel E. And I don't know if this is just the, a way that they worded something or something went awry, because as it goes down, it talks about the, the garden areas. But if you look at number B, it says the garden area parcel shall be limited to any combination, one or more of the following uses. Garden, garden op- apparatus such as gazebos, blah, blah, blah. But then it also goes into, are a maximum parking garage. So how did gardening go into a parking garage? Parking area, a three-hundred car, three-hundred-and-twenty-five car parking area. So they've, they've changed the wording just enough in this paragraph that, that it would go under, that they could use the parking garage as part of the garden area. So I want you to see those words in there. And then, another issue of mine was, what's the ratio, I'm sorry, ratio owners to renters? Like how many of these units will actually be sold to homeowners? And actually, will be short-term rentals and actually just rentals? And then, one of the other thing is, 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 is you really can't help the destruction that's gonna happen on Bogey Ford Road from this project. I just wish this would have came before we did Bogey Ford Road because we just spent a lot of money putting that road to where it needs to be and now here. You know, as he, as he stated, they're subtracting so many trucks, but he didn't say how many trucks would actually be coming down Bogey Ford. And we just had a little discussion about Highland Pa- Park, or Highland Lakes Drive as well, which is, you know, making the, that gonna be wider or whatever needs to be done. And then, one of my other questions was, um, let me see. Oh, the spray foam. So I, you know, they're talking about how they're, you know, saving trees and spray foam. If you don't put the right amount of spray foam into a building, it's actually detrimental to the planet because it lets off a lot of toxins. So unless they know what they're putting in there and it's an organic spray foam, it's not really a plus. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
All right. I can answer one of your questions in, uh, uh, for rental, it was thirty percent maximum. Does, would anybody like to address Darcy's questions? I can only answer the one. No. All right. Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pardon me. Um, some questions for the applicant that I'd, I'd like to direct to you. They moved the structures back from the floodplain, and I'm wondering, was that done by necessity due to Noah changing the floodplains? Insurance purposes, in other words, with those, uh, with those changes? Two years of.
The question is no.
Okay, thank you. Um, you said you, you're, you're estimating two years of construction. How many phases in that construction and what is your phase one going to be?
Civil construction, uh, so grading, drainage and parking, asphalt concrete. And then you do your architectural with your prefabricated modular construction.
Uh, may it has an announcement for everybody? I think now would be a good time, uh, to listen this and, and I think it will answer everybody's questions, uh, now and in the future, so.
I'm happy to, Mayor, and, and, and hold my questions until he's done. It's okay, no, please, go ahead.
Uh, it's good, please.
Uh, he said he would hold for our announcement. Thank you. Uh, so the developer has pulled for the council meeting and would no longer like to go forward with the changes and they will be building the original PDD. So this time, we would no longer like to be considered for item agenda number seven.
Okay.
Really do appreciate your time and, and, uh, efforts.
Yes. Thank you all for hearing us, strictly. We really appreciate it.
And good evening.
All right. Well, with that being said, uh, I will need to ask Aaron, uh, a procedural question. Do we just go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and then, um, if they're pulling their, if they're gonna pull their application? What's, what's the?
So, Mr. Mayor, if they're withdrawing their application, um, there's nothing for you to take action on. I mean, you can close the public hearing if you'd like to have a clean record, but, um, there's no further discussion that's necessary on this item.
Okay.
Can someone from the public ask a question?
Uh, well.
M- m- Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Roberts had the floor earlier, I'll, I'll, um.
Thanks, I, I'll just be really brief. I, I, I'm gonna forego all the other questions and observations I had, but, uh, I would just throw out there, I, I would be interested in getting Aaron's input on if it would be, you know, just to, to close any loose ends for the city. Would it be appropriate to, for the council to vote to remove the item from the agenda? Or is it, you know, or vote on it just to close it out and have finality on it and not have any loose strings out there perhaps? Thank you.
So if the applicant is choosing to withdraw their application, there's not a limitation in our regs that I have found that would prohibit them from withdrawing the application. If they have withdrawn, there's nothing for you to act on, Mr. Mayor. There's nothing for the council to act on. So you would want to reflect in the record for, this is for Sandra, that, you know, at whatever time the applicant announces, through the city manager or whoever notified, uh, that, uh, they are withdrawing this application and that's it.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Mr. Scruggs?
Yeah, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council. I just had a question based on their withdrawal. In the future, if a developer wants to go ahead and develop the property, are they still entitled to go back to the existing PDD that's thirteen years old right now? Or how, how does that work?
Yes, the current, the existing PDD remains in effect.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. Well, um, at this time, I will go ahead and close the public hearing portion of that at nine twenty-nine PM, and there is nothing else to consider. We will move on to the next agenda item. And if the applicants are gonna be leaving us at this time, I would like to express my appreciation for them attending and, and presenting for us tonight and, uh, we'll be working with you again on, on the current PDD.
Thank you all for your time tonight. You have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thank you. All right. Let me go back up here. Page four. All right, number eight, action items. Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding resolution number twenty-one dash eighteen ninety-three, a resolution by the city council of the city of Lago Vista, Texas, scheduling a public hearing to consider additional adoption of land use assumptions and a capital improvements plan for roadway facilities under which an impact fee may be imposed for roadways within the city, directing the city secretary to publish notice of said public hearing and directing the impact fee advisory committee to consider and make recommendations on the roadway facilities, land use assumptions and capital improvement plans. Um, go here to number eight. My packet. All right. In addition to its use by the staff as a planning and policy regulatory document, current thoroughfare plan is an essential basis for legally defensible impact fee for roadway facilities or streets. If the thoroughfare plan update is approved by the council, and I'm gonna have to ask, because I had to step away, did we approve the thoroughfare plan?
Yes, we did, sir.
Okay. It would thereafter be permissible for the council to take the additional steps necessary to consider the question of whether it is desirable to also collect impact fees for new subdivisions within the jurisdiction. Scheduling of this public hearing is the first of those additional necessary steps. The purpose of collecting those impact fees is to ensure that new development pays a legally appropriate share of the cost of growth associated with adding roadway facility capacity when it is inevitably required. Although it is not initially expected to be a significant source of revenue, the alternative approach of not collecting those fees means that, that the all residents, both new and existing, share that burden equally. New residents, of course, benefit from that expenditure that ensures that we maintain the existing performance level of our roadway facilities. Existing residents derive no direct benefit from that expenditure. As a result, any potential reduction in their burden for these costs is considered more equitable. In short, the same equitable considerations that justify the collection of water and wastewater impact fees applies equally to impact fees for roadway facilities. The primary difference is that the impact of growth to our water and wastewater infrastructure is deemed to occur at the. is deemed to occur at the time of those connections. At permitting, the impact of growth to our roadway facilities is deemed to occur when the lots in a new subdivision are planted. As a result, we are unable to collect roadway facility impact fees on the many existing vacant and undeveloped lots that are already planted. Whether accurate or not, that growth is deemed to have already occurred, notwithstanding the lack of residents occupying those lots that own cars that use our roadway facilities. At some point in the future, however, it seems likely that new subdivisions will be a substantial component of our growth. As we progress toward that result in the future, the significance of any roadway facility impact fees should grow commensurately. Is there anything that staff would like to add to that this time? All right, counsel. Questions, comments?
This is Eddie Haas, Freezing Nichols. If I could add a few comments on behalf of the program. I do have a little few slides to share if someone can make me the presenter.
All right. You are now our presenter.
Okay, very good. So with this, the resolution is calling and we've, the staff report identified it correctly that the impact fee program, just like your water wastewater program is, is a policy statement and a finance tool is saying new development should share in the cost of new facilities that are needed to serve future growth. So it becomes a question of who's going to help pay for improvements. Two, two basic buckets of money, if you will, because capital costs are going to be, for, for capacity expansions are going to occur. And there's two general pots, either new development can chip in portion of that cost or the other, with an impact fee program or without an impact fee program, it looks to the existing tax base to, to pick that up. All this is regulated under chapter 395 Texas Local Government Codes. And for new programs such as roads, it calls for a two-step public hearing process identified here in item four. And that's, and that's what your, the resolution is calling for. It's a public hearing on the land use assumptions and CIP. I'll talk about that here in a second. That public hearing does not mean you're implementing impact fees. It's the building blocks to the second public hearing where there's actual the discussion when all the costing and the cost for service, you know, when all the technical work is complete, where then you're having the discussion of the potential imposition of the roadway impact fee program. Okay, so the resolution tonight merely calls for the public hearing on land use assumptions and CIP that informs the calculation or the cost to put unit of service on the ground in the case of roads and the implementation of that program. We are working with the, the capital improvements advisory committee, that is your planning and zoning commission that's serving as the capital improvements advisory committee. We've already met to review growth rates and to discuss tenure growth. We prepared a document that we will be submitting tomorrow or in the final QA QC today and tomorrow morning. So that'll be getting sent out tomorrow. But it's, it's going to discuss land use assumptions and it's going to discuss the preliminary roadway impact fee program. And what land use assumptions are is, is basically a snapshot of how we see Lago Vista growing. Earlier, we talked about the thoroughfare plan and that was kind of the ultimate picture of, of the network need to address long-term growth. Well, this takes that picture and looks at only 10 years. Based on how we're going to grow, how much infrastructure or how much units of service do we need to provide to cover impact by new development on the roadway network? So we're going to be taking a look at the 10-year window. We're going to look at specifically population growth and employment growth because those are two different, how they have different travel characteristics. And based on how we see land use assumptions grow and the associated growth rate, we're going to be able to determine service units of demand or the net increase needed to address growth over the 10-year window. That becomes the basis for the, the roadway CIP. We do have a roadway service area structure that's been developed. Two service areas have been identified for Lago Vista. The reason for service areas and the law is very specific on this is, first of all, roads can only be collected within the city limits, unlike water wastewater, which may cover a service boundary that, that is into your ETJ or a CCN, roads can only cover your current city limits. And further says that you have to have service areas that address growth and development. And the reason for service areas is that money's collected on the north side of town, aren't paying for improvements on the south side of town and vice versa. So the, the CIP that, that is identified will then have its own individual calculation on what it's going to cost to provide unit of service. And in this case, we've called it service area one to the north, service area two on the south. Okay, your thoroughfare plan that was adopted tonight, major, I'm sorry, arterial and collector class facilities on that thoroughfare plan can be considered as part of the impact fee program. We have identified capacity enhancement projects that are not on the ground today, but that we can, that are eligible for consideration as part of impact fees. We'll, we'll have that as part of that report. Things that go into that consideration are the tenure demands, input by staff, project achievability, you know, is, is it a project that we see realistically happening? So the impact fee program is a 10-year window, but doesn't mean we're going to have all these improvements done within 10 years as long as the city is in good faith, working towards implementing that. So in other words, and you'll see in that, in that CIP at the public hearing, that those are, those are capacity enhancements in terms of lane additions, new lanes of roadway or roads that have, that are unbuilt now that are on the program. So we've identified several projects in service area one and really just a few in service area two. But that becomes the basis for the CIP. So that's just kind of a little bit of the background on the, what, what you're going to be hearing as part of that public hearing. And, and so again, it's not going to be adopting impact fees. I want to make that very clear. It's only the building blocks for the final, the second public hearing, which considers the imposition of impact fees. And then also by ordinance, what collection rate to charge. Okay. Available to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you very much.
You bet.
All right, now we'll go to counsel, questions, comments? All right, can I can't see anybody, so.
How do I, is there a way I can relinquish control back? I'm not, I'm not sure how to release control if that helps show the screen.
Or close it.
There we go. Thank you. Okay.
I feel your pain.
Well, you all have had a tough night already with your previous cases, so.
All right, counsel. Yeah, okay, anybody from the audience? All right, well, I'll entertain a motion then.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 21-1893.
I'll second that.
All right, I have the motion by Counselor Sullivan and a second by Counselor Prince. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we'll go to the next one. That's number nine. Are you still with us or are you leaving us at this point?
Unless there's anything related to impact fees, I'm going to go ahead and cut out. That's okay. Okay, I'll see you in September. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very appreciate it. All right, so number nine. Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding ordinance number 21-08-05-01. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lago Vista, Texas pursuant to Vernon's Texas Codes annotated, Local Government Code, Chapter 102, Section 102.007B, providing for amendments to ordinance number 20-0917-02 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, ending September 30, 2021. Amendments to said budget by department are set forth in Exhibit A attached to this ordinance. Summary, over the last several months, the Lago Vista Golf Course has had an increase in activity. This increase has also created additional wait time for golf carts, carts. Some wait times have exceeded almost an hour. In an effort to provide exceptional customer service, minimized wait time and additional carts were ordered from Yamaha in June. Golf carts are part of a lease program with Yamaha, which consists of golf carts currently in its fleet. This fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget only appropriated the cost of 60 golf carts. Therefore, an additional $3,187.65 is needed to cover the lease cost of the additional 10 golf carts for the remainder of this fiscal year. Is there anything that staff would like to add to that number?
Yes, sir, Mayor, I would. So the 10 additional carts were actually dropped off in June. And you will see in a moment that they were done so before we had given them permission. As such, they are sitting at our cart barn and cannot be utilized until we execute a contract and we get insurance on them. What we have done is, and they are budgeted for 21, 22. So we have taken three months of the lease and we are budgeting them for this fiscal year according to a budget amendment so that these carts don't sit there and are not utilized so that we can provide customer service to the golfers.
All right, thank you very much. Questions? Counsel Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. Tracy actually just hit on something that's really my question or more, maybe even more of a comment. But I'm just kind of curious why they would have been ordered and delivered in June if it wasn't confirmed that there was enough budget to order them to begin with? Seems like putting the cart before the horse? Or was there perhaps some, is there perhaps some accounting reason for this that I might not be aware of?
So, and I appreciate that, Councilman Marion. So they were actually, since we do not have a contract, they actually just showed up. So it would have been something that we would have come to council. We would have had a signed contract and then we would have gone back to them. And hopefully they would not have come into our possession until closer to the next budget year because they are all budgeted in that year. Seeing as though that did not happen and this was not something that the staff had anticipated would be that they would come without a signed executed contract, we are sitting there with 10 carts and it is, like you said, the cart before the horse. We are sitting there waiting and we feel like that probably isn't our best means of customer service for those golfers if they are having to wait. I will also add that we had an opportunity to get an additional 15 carts from another company. We have halted that and told them that we would no longer take or receive any other carts because it is important to keep the fleet the same. And so these 10 carts are exactly the same as the Yamaha carts that we already have in our fleet so that we can keep everything pretty much identical at the golf course.
Okay, so they kind of showed up without staff expecting them to show up then is, is what I'm hearing. Like you weren't expecting them to show up until a few months later.
That is correct.
Now I'm understanding. Thank you.
I like the pun, the golf cart before the horse.
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Prince.
A couple of things. It's a pretty small number, frankly. And the last time I saw the numbers for the expenses for the year for the golf course, it was far under the budgeted plan. So I'm assuming this is, is not going to have any material impact on the overall expense for the golf course, meeting the yearly budget. And then I would also assume that while it may be hard to measure, that having these golf carts and eliminating the, limiting the wait time will help with driving more revenue. So to me, this is from all aspects, it's a small number, expenses are below plan anyway. It probably helps with the revenue. It seems like a simple one to just knock out pretty quickly and move forward on it.
All right.
I would like to comment, we have done a new budget sheet. So I'm not sure that I can reassure you that it's going to be under budget, but I will assure you that we will have a balanced budget no matter what.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else on counsel? All right, anybody in the audience? Darcy.
Hello, Mayor. Thank you for letting me speak and I didn't sign up. But I was just going to say, this guy, whoever delivered them in June, he could have had 150 of these things on his truck and just happened to be cruising by Lago Vista and said, I'm going to drop these 10 things so I can go on with my route. And that's how that happens. And then not to be able to use them right now, that's a little bit of a crying shame. It's now August. That's two months out of, you know, being able to be used. But I hope that you guys vote on this and, and get them into production with the, with the golf course because they're needed and you're coming up on fall and the weather's going to get better and then you won't have them into the next fiscal year. So personally, I would just sign off on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 21-08-05-01.
Oh, gosh. You have no idea who got the second in. I'll give it to Counsel Marion. She's waving her hand.
That's fine.
Got the motion.
That's all that matters.
I got the motion by Counselor Williams and the second by Counselor Marion. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. And we go to number 10. And number 10 is the actual contract. Let me scroll down here so I can read it. Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding the approval and execution of the conditional sale agreement with Yamaha for the purchase lease of 10 golf carts. Over the last several months, let's see, it says exactly the same thing. Other than the contract has been reviewed by the city attorney. Staff request the city council to approve the contract and authorize the city manager to execute the contract with Yamaha for the purchase lease of the 10 additional golf carts. Is there anything staff needs to add to that one?
We weren't going to be presumptuous, so if the budget amendment did not pass, we would not need this item. So now this is trying to get everything back in line. Soon as we get an executed contract, we can get insurance on those carts and we can get them into play.
All right, thank you. Counsel, questions, comments? Nope. All right, anybody from the audience? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the 10 carts and give the city manager authorization to sign the contract.
All right, so the motion came from Counsel Weatherly, second from Counselor Marion. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. And we go to 11. Just scroll down here. All right, where's 11? All right, let me do it this way.
Page 211.
Yeah. Oh, of course, I was one page away. All right, discussion, consideration and possible action on contract with Doliver or Doliver Enterprises LLC doing business as the household hazardous waste solutions for the household hazardous waste service. At the April 15, 2021 council meeting, council considered bids for household hazardous waste collection services. On the motion by council member Sullivan, seconded by council member Williams, council voted unanimously that we authorize the city attorney to negotiate with household hazardous waste solutions to have a contract for the household hazardous waste disposal and that we include the electronics option. The service will be provided to any residential dwelling that is either a single family residential unit or a multi-family residential unit such as a condo, duplex, townhouse or apartment that generates and accumulates household hazardous waste as those terms are defined in the contract. Billing will be on a per dwelling basis, unit basis for any residential unit that has utility service, trash, recycling, water or wastewater through the city. If approved, customers will be notified via the next two months utility billings of the upcoming service and charge. And is there anything staff would like to add to that?
No, Mr. Mayor, um, I guess the, in the future, this one's, this one was a little delayed in getting to you because you actually made the motion to have to bring it back. All of the contract requirements are, are in place. We've worked with Mr. Demian to make sure that service is going to be provided to all of those uh, households that uh, will be expecting that type of service. So we think this is a great thing uh, to get moving on.
Well, thank you very much. And I was just checking, yes, page 217. I wanted to verify dollar five per month.
Yeah.
All right. And I want to apologize. Uh, Mr. Demian, I noticed you were in the audience earlier and we probably could have moved this up somewhere a little bit. Uh, so you weren't still with us at 10 o'clock? You have anything? Is he still with us?
I am.
Okay.
I don't have anything. I, I don't have anything to add. I just, uh, you know, we're excited about the prospect of starting in Lago Vista and uh, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but otherwise, it's just kind of here to be a spectator.
All right. Again, sorry I kept you here till 10 o'clock. Council Marion?
Really, Mayor, just have a comment. I'm uh, ready for this to get cruising. I think a lot of people will be able to make good use of this. So I'm, I'm in favor.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Council Prince?
Just a, just a informational question. I happen to live very close to the, the large condominium complex called The Island. And uh, I know that they get trash services or the same trash company Pride Services, but they're not getting water and sewer. Is that, do you know Mr. Damian or someone from the city whether those particular residents of the city are covered under this or not? And I mean, it, it either is or it's not. I just want to be aware of the situation if someone asks me.
Yes, Council Prince, it is anticipated that service would be provided. They would pay the fee based on the number of dwelling units at that complex.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
All right, anybody else? All right, anybody from the audience? Darcy.
I, I just have too many questions. I'm sorry, Mayor. Um, so are, are we including the TV stuff with it? Because I remember we were gonna bump it up and include the TV so I could like blast that. And, and is this the same company that did all the presentations? Cause they were wonderful when they came in. Same company, right? They take it up towards Dallas and oh, thank goodness, thank goodness. And when does it start? Today, tomorrow, this week, hopefully?
Uh, so yes, we did. We did add the electronics. And uh, we'll be spending two months making sure everybody's notified properly of not only the service, but the rate. Uh, so September, October, is August considered one of the notifications? So maybe October, if not October, uh, November. Is when it'll. I'm sorry?
November 1st is what, is what it says. Yeah.
Okay. All right, anybody else? All right, if that is everyone, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we authorize the city manager to execute this contract with Dollar Enterprises, um, DVA, HHS, uh, so HHW Solutions, um, so we can get this service started.
Second. Second.
All right, add the motion by Council Sullivan, second by Council Williams. All those in favor say, is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, sir. And uh, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Bunch.
I hope we were entertaining for you.
Indeed you were.
All right, we will move on to the next one. Uh, discussion, consideration and possible action are regarding accepting a drainage easement from Heinz Limited Partnership and authorize the mayor to sign the documents. The developer is required for Tera Phase 3B to provide drainage easements for stormwater conveyance prior to the city's acceptance of the infrastructure. This easement conveyance is as a result of engineering design review comments to provide the city adequate stormwater property protection from future development. Typically, this is done during the padding process and included in the preliminary plaque. However, the easement width extents were determined upon a subsequent engineering study that took some time to complete. Thus, these easements will be recorded as a separate instrument. There are a total of four easements of various sizes and shapes located all on the west side of the development. Attached the easement documents and exhibits. The developer is sending the city originals for signature. After acceptance, these documents will be filed with the county. City staff has reviewed the easements and determined that they are sufficient to address design comments and recommend approval. Is there anything that staff needs to add to that summary? All right, uh, I'm gonna scroll down here. I was trying to look at these uh, drainage easements and I don't know if it's just, just me, but the way the colors and stuff were on these in the, in the blue, I had no idea what, what I was looking at really. It's just a bunch of squiggly lines, glass lines. Uh, it's just a, it's a sight and on my, on my end, I really can't, I really couldn't make out these pictures. And I know there's four separate ones, but. Questions, comments from council?
Nope.
All right. All right, anybody from the audience? All right, if that is it, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Uh, I said that, then I had a thought pop into my head. Um, Aaron, I know the way it's, it's written, it says, uh, grant the mayor to, to sign. Does it have to be me? I mean, it, it doesn't matter either way, but if council wanted to, they could approve the city manager to sign it?
Yes, the council can authorize city manager to take that action. Just needs to be in the motion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure council knew that. Uh, I know it says mayor in the summary, but. Uh, all right, so now I'll take the motion.
Mayor, I will make a motion that we accept these drainage easements from Heinz and authorize either you or the city manager to sign off on the documents.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second by Council Marion. Uh, the motion was by Council Sullivan. Uh, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. Thank you all. And we'll go to the next one. And that would be 13. Uh, this is coming from Parks and Rec. Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding the acceptance of the Texas Department of Transportation Airport Coronavirus Relief Grant. Tex dot has been working with FAA to implement the coronavirus response and recovery supplemental appropriations act, which includes the airport coronavirus response grant program. The funding amounts were determined based on each airport's national plan of integrated airport systems classification. The amount granted to Lago Vista Rusty Allen Airport is $13,000. The purpose of this grant is to prevent, prepare for and respond to coronavirus. Funds provided under this grant must only be used for purposes directly related to the airport. Reimbursement of any airport costs related to operations, personnel, cleaning, sanitation, janitorial services and combating the spread of pathogens after January 2020. This grant also may be used to reimburse a sponsor's payment of debt service where such payments occur on or after December 27, 2020. Funds provided under this grant will be governed by the same principles that govern airport revenue. New airport development projects not directly related to combating the spread of pathogens may not be funded with this grant. Is there anything that staff would like to add to this summary? All right, not seen anything. I do have uh, a question and if possible, I would just kind of like to hear what has been done and what will be done in the future uh, with these funds as far as the coronavirus relief. Do we?
Mayor, I can answer that. So because of the federal funding that is coming down from the federal government in regards to COVID, this is something that they have been um, distributing to all of the airports in the nation. So we are not any different. We had to apply just like we would and did for the American Rescue Relief Plan. This actually has a lot of flexibility as opposed to the American um, rescue plan. In ARPA, it tells us specifically what we can spend that funding on. As long as this funding is spent in regards to the airport as far as personnel, cleaning, um, anything buying fuel, anything that has direct correlation to the airport, it can be utilized for. So it is almost like an insurgence of 13,000 into the revenue source for the airport.
All right, yeah, I know back last year we had to do quite a bit to the, uh, to the lounge area. So, uh, all right. Council, comments, questions? No? All right, anybody from the audience? Darcy, are you raising your hand or are you just waving?
Council Marion has her hand up.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Council Marion.
Okay, Mayor, I was just gonna say that I'm in favor of uh, accepting any grant funds that we can get for our city. So I'm, I'm in favor of this one.
All right, so Darcy, you definitely have your hand up now.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, this is where I would say if this is grant money and it's coming towards the airport and Chris Mobley is the one that's gonna be in charge of this over Parks and Rec, it will go to some great things that can be done. Like they just did hire someone part-time up at the airport. So this could help with that. It's cert, if it's $13,000, maybe somewhere down the tunnel, it becomes 20,000. Who knows? By the time this uh, this uh, COVID act is over, you could see a lot more money filed to different places. So I would take all of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, if that's everybody, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I will make a motion that we authorize acceptance and allocation of the Texas Department of Transportation Airport TDTA Coronavirus Relief Grant for 13,000 for the city of Lago Vista Rusty Allen Airport and allow the city manager to execute the TDTA Coronavirus Relief Grant Agreement.
All right. Got the motion by Council Sullivan. I think I heard Council Weatherly is the second. Uh, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Okay, hearing none, the grant has been accepted unanimous.
That was not easy to say, Mayor.
I know. Well done. I left out the uh, the, the abbreviations. There's too many letters.
Yeah, agreed.
I was very impressed.
All right, uh, let's see, we'll go down to the next one. Golf Course Advisory Committee Vacancy Discussion, Consideration and Possible Action Regarding Resolution Number 21 dash 1894, a resolution by the city council of the city of Lago Vista, Texas, appointing an individual to fill an unexpired vacant term as a member of the Golf Course Advisory Committee and to otherwise provide with respect there too. And Ms. Weatherly, I'll just let you give the summary.
And I'm on, uh, yes, we've had vacancies on our committee for quite some time now. And finally, uh, have had someone volunteer. Let me get down here just for me. I can't remember Mark's last name right now. It's just, I went blank. Thank you. Uh, but this is someone that Darcy knew. And Mr. Douglas sent me a uh, application and requested to be on the Golf Course Advisory Committee. And I would like to make a motion that we accept Mark Douglas to fulfill uh, the term. It goes to.
All right, hold on, just, hold on just a second. Before you make your formal motion, let me see if anybody in council has a comment. Uh, I will comment that if you were in the social media world, you would know who Mr. Mark Douglas is.
My wife.
And if you go to the farmer's market, you'll see him playing bass too.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's where I met him. Okay. Anyway, his application looked very good. If you looked at it, I think you'll make an excellent member for our committee.
I agree.
Good question, Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, I assume he's going into an existing open seat and so maybe when the motion comes, we need to know what seat that is and when the term expires, that, that kind of thing.
That's what I was looking for.
All right.
He fulfilled the reputation of Tom Vogt and his term ends January 2022.
All right. Anybody in the audience? All right.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. I have to, I have to comment again. Did you recognize me, Mayor? I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, um, first off, thank goodness, uh, because um, I, I texted Mark the other day and he hadn't heard anything about his application. So I'm really shocked when Dick just said this, so I'm happy for that. I think he'll make a great uh, I think he'll make a great person with our committee and that we get our committee back on where it needs to be. And also that, yes, he does know how to work social media. So hopefully, he starts kind of helping that towards the golf course. Not that I take favors, but I take favors. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. I'll entertain. Now you can make your motion, Ms. Weatherly.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Mark Douglas to fill the unexpired term of Tom Voth, pending in January of 2022.
Second.
All right. I have the motion and the second by Council Williams. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing none. We welcome Mr. Douglas to the Golf Course Advisory Committee unanimously. We go to the next one. 15. Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding Resolution Number 21-1895, a resolution by the City Council of the City of Lago Vista, Texas, an individual to fill an unexpired vacant term as a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. And Shalane, I'll turn this one over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So Shad Pelazari, who is currently the Secretary for the Parks and Rec Committee, turned in his resignation from the committee and needs to be replaced. He is joining the Knights of Columbus and taking over for a chapter that his grandfather actually started. So we wish him well with that. Mr. Pelazari was appointed to the committee in December of 2019 and his term expires on January 1 of 22. I did receive a couple of applications for participation on the committee, which is terrific. But at this time, I would like to name or recommend Mandy Carter for that position. Mandy would be a wonderful addition to the committee. She works closely with the nature, I'm sorry, the Trail Conservancy and has a lot of knowledge that she can bring to the table with respect to Parks and Rec. So Mandy would be my recommendation at this time.
All right. Mandy also did a lot of work with the Fourth of July Council, did she not? Anybody know? I was thinking she did.
Yeah. I think she did.
I believe so, Mayor. I think I remember seeing that in her application. But don't quote me 100%, but I'm pretty sure she did. I think she worked with Mr. Powell, who also had a lot to do with that. Miss Honor.
All right. Anybody else, comments? Excuse me, sorry. All right. Anybody in the audience? All right. Well, you can make your motion, Council Marion.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So I would like to make a motion that council approved the recommendation to name Mandy Carter to the, to fill an unexpired vacant term on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee with the term expiring January 1 of 2022.
Second.
All right. I have the motion and I have the second by Council Williams. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, we welcome Mandy Carter to the Parks and Rec Committee unanimously. And we go to the next one. Go down here. Is that it?
That's it.
That's it.
Lee, let me go back up here then. I was having a good time. I wasn't ready for it to end.
You're right yourself.
Makes one of us, Mayor.
Somebody was having some fun.
All right. Well, if that is it, I will call this meeting adjourned at 10:18 PM. And thank you all very much.
Have a great one.
We'll see.
Darcy, before you go.